Welcome to the City Council's April 26th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present in the City Council chambers. Vice Mayor Jan Wollison, City Council Member Drew Combs, Interim City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradorti, City Clerk Judy Harret, City Council Members and Staff Participating Remotely, City Council Member Cecilia Taylor. Councilmember Mueller has something with his son and will join us later. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our April 26th City Council meeting. For members of the public who are in attendance, if you wish to provide public comment on an item, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. This concludes my introduction at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? Vice Mayor Wilson.
I have a clarifying question. If we want to discuss something on an info item, do you want us to let you know that now or wait until the end?
Yes, it would be helpful to know now.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to want to discuss J2, the short-term rental item.
Thank you. Presentations and proclamations. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on our proclamation, item D1?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D1, a proclamation on Earth Day, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation, item D1. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Proclamation Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day has been celebrated globally since 1970 to unite around protecting our common environment to ensure future generations will have a safe and sustainable future. And whereas people, all people of this earth, no matter their country, gender, income, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, or abilities, have a right to live in a healthy environment and whereas in 2019, the Menlo Park City Council adopted a resolution recognizing the threat of climate change and the urgent need to combat it. And whereas in 2020, the Menlo Park City Council adopted its Climate Action Plan with the goal of net zero carbon emissions by 2030. And whereas the 2020 United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change reported that nations are far off track for meeting commitments to reduce catastrophic climate change. And whereas the Menlo Park City Council declared a state of emergency with respect to climate change, yet is not on track to meet its zero by zero carbon by 2030 goal in its Climate Action Plan. And whereas local cities, including Menlo Park, helped create Peninsula Clean Energy, which supplies 100% carbon-free electricity for all customers in Menlo Park. And whereas Menlo Park has notable accomplishments in making progress in protecting the environment, such as adopting all-electric reach codes for new construction, implementing a sustainable green fleet policy, purchasing a solar battery microgrid that will provide clean emergency power for the new community center in Bell Haven. And whereas Menlo Park's successful experience and presence in Silicon Valley gives it a unique opportunity to demonstrate leadership and set an example for other cities to reduce greenhouse gases with innovative, comprehensive, and expeditious approaches. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Nash, on behalf of the City Council, the City of Menlo Park, California, encourage all residents and businesses to celebrate the earth and deepen their understanding of environmental protection, the urgency of climate change, and the need to create a healthier, safer, more equitable future for all people. Environmental Quality Commissioner Chair Angela Evans and Environmental Quality Commissioner Tom Cabot are here to accept the proclamation.
Hello. This is EQC Chair Angela Evans. Thank you for your leadership, Mayor Nash. I accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the good work you're doing on the Environmental Quality Commission.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to say how important I think these proclamations are because they're a moment to step back and think about the bigger picture because we're talking a lot about wonky policy a lot of the times related to climate. And I just want to share a moment I had with my son in the backyard yesterday. We were sitting outside. It was a beautiful afternoon, and I took a moment to just take a deep breath. And I remember during wildfire season when we can't go outside and do that. And the moment, that first day after wildfire season where you can take a deep breath. And I think it's important that we have these moments where we take a step back and appreciate these times we have with good air quality, but not be complacent with that. Stay alert and vigilant on the real emergency that we have with climate. So thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. And now we will move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda Sections, Closed Session, Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments, Study Session, Consent Calendar, Regular Business, Informational Reports, and City Council Member Reports. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Our first speaker will be Kathleen Daly.
Hello and good evening. Thank you, Mayor Nash, council members and staff for an opportunity to speak. Excuse me, I've just got to make the screen smaller here. One second. I happened to come across on the Nextdoor social media platform an issue that I find incredibly troubling. The issue surrounds the Ravenswood School District potential plan to build some very much-needed teacher and staff housing on the old Flood School site. The site, I was quite certain, belonged to them, and I was thrilled to learn of this plan. We need teachers to be able to live in the community close, if not at least in the districts where they teach. As I read further into this issue, I came across a troubling problem regarding the residential zoning that is linked to the general plan, and now a group of 250 residents in the Flood Park area trying to get something on the November ballot that could torpedo this plan. The way that I understand this initiative is so troubling. The Ravenswood School Board should have total control over this site. How did this zoning ever get changed? But I have more questions. Where should the teachers of the Ravenswood District live? Teachers are the backbone of every great society. What message is its initiative sending? Does that matter to you? For that matter, how many new teachers in Menlo Park can afford to live here? In addition, your own city reported a record number of staff shortages recently. How many of the staff that the city needs can afford to live in this city? The council should do whatever it is possible to go after plans that support housing. The Ravenswood School District is doing an excellent job under stressful conditions to keep and secure housing for their teachers. There are ways to work around this particular group's concerns. Traffic mitigation, crosswalk bike bridge, district shuttles, all kinds of things. Using the traffic and the fear-mongering of changing the neighborhood should not be what the city of Menlo Park and San Mateo County should be about. Please do not support this initiative going forward and make choices to correct the housing inequities so blatant in this town. Thank you for an opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker will be Shivani Saran.
Hello, my name is Sami Saran. I reside on the 1200 block of Windermere Avenue. Many of you have probably heard about the repeated shootings on the 1200 block, most recently as of yesterday, where machine gun fire opened up around 8:20 PM yesterday with more than 20-plus shots fired. I'm very concerned about this, and it's an issue for public health and safety for the citizens of Bell Haven in District 1. In the past, we have asked for cameras to be installed, license plate readers, to help assist the police in tracking these sorts of issues down, being able to catch the culprits. We have not seen any movement on that front. We've asked for increased lighting in Bell Haven. We have not seen movement on that front. We have asked for a walk-through in the dark while this happens so that others are aware of what's going on in our neighborhoods. We would really like to request that these issues are brought up in future as agenda items in future meetings. This is an urgent matter for us. We have now lived through multiple of these shootings in Bell Haven in the two years that we have been here. And this has really affected our long-term outlook on Bell Haven and Menlo Park as a whole. And as residents, we really don't we are really questioning how long until this results in fatalities. So we would really like the city to address these issues and go through and fix whatever can be fixed. Thank you for your time. That's all I wanted to raise.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Todd Steers. So Todd, it looks like you have unmuted. Do you have a microphone engaged? Todd, if you're using a headset, you may want to check to make sure it's plugged in. If you're not using a headset, you want to make sure that your device is able to increase your volume. Okay, Todd, I'm gonna come right back to you. And I'm going to go to our next speaker, which is Amy Ball. Amy, it looks like you are off mute. Are we able to increase your volume? So Amy, it looks like we might have the same difficulty. I'm not sure if you're using a headset. Check the jack to make sure that it is fully plugged in. If you're not using a headset, make sure that your device has the ability to increase your audio volume. And Amy, I turn to you. I'm going to come back to Todd to see if you're able to get you online, Todd.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Oh, Todd, we were able to hear you. It looks like you might have
Is that better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Todd, also District 1, also 1200 block of Windermere. I just wanted to echo Sami's comments. I also wanted to mention that this is the third shooting on this block this year alone. You know, things seem to be getting worse, not better. You know, if we could get more patrols, I know there has been a market increase from the MPPD. And we were lucky to have them in the area at the time of last night's shooting, so they were their response time was impeccable, so kudos to them on that. But there's only four ways in and out of this neighborhood. You know, we don't have to put cameras on every single corner, just those points of ingress and egress, I think would be fine and would go a long way towards towards forensics and gathering data and hopefully busting some of these people who are coming into our usually quiet neighborhood filled with hard-working, working-class people who really don't deserve to live with this kind of violence on a monthly basis. So yeah, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And so our next speaker will be Amy Ball. Okay, Amy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Sorry, that was a mistake.
Okay, I'll go ahead and lower the hand. All right, so this will be the final call for public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so we will go ahead and reopen the opportunity for, oh, yes, Shivani. Did you wish to provide another comment? Shivani Saran. So again, I see a hand up for Shivani Saran. Did you need, or did you want to provide an additional comment? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and lower that hand. And again, final call for public comment for an item not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you to our public commenters. Chief Norris is here and would like to make a comment.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Nash and Council. Chief Dave Norris from Menlo Park PD. Really appreciate the comments that we had from members of our public. This was a terrifying incident last night, and for those of us who have seen the video that we thankfully did have from the street that night. It is incredibly scary, even to myself as a professional in this business. It is incredibly terrifying. And so that is not lost on our personnel. I am appreciative for the fact that we had several officers in the area who proactively were on scene very, very quickly. We did manage to make contact and speak with residents from that particular house on Windermere that appeared to be the target of this particular shooting and make a couple of related arrests last night. Although those were not related directly to the shooting, we were able to at least take some action. And we recovered one firearm from the scene, so there was a ghost gun, an unserial numbered weapon that was recovered at the scene that we were also able to get off the streets last night. But our officers have been working on that particular block. We know that there are a number of issues that we need to work through. Just this past week, we've had some significant progress with that in terms of working with the city attorney on concerns regarding this particular house in a long-term kind of chronic disturbance issue, as well as some of the criminal investigations that we are currently doing. Of greatest concern to us right now is trying to get through this current investigation and hopefully come up with some further traction on identifying suspects and bringing people to justice. We're creating this kind of chaos in our city. We have no tolerance for violence like this. As I said, this is a terrorizing or terrifying event. A couple of the commenters did mention cameras, and I know we have spoken a little bit about the idea of bringing in some additional license plate reader camera resources into the city. I'd like to work with the city manager to try and get that agendized for a discussion with you all as soon as possible. We have had some initial discussions with one of the vendors that's been very effective up and down the peninsula. So we are ready to move some of this forward as soon as we can have that discussion and talk about our next steps.
Thank you very much, Chief Norris. So next we will hold public comment for closed session. We are offering public comment at this time on the closed session. There will be a second call for public comment on the closed session item before adjourning to closed session later in this meeting. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment for closed session item M1.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our closed session item M1, Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation to Potential Cases, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item M1. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. Next, we are moving on to Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. F1, consider appointments, I'm sorry, consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on the various city advisory bodies. To introduce the item is City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So the item before the City Council is to consider applicants and make appointments to our Complete Streets Commission, Environmental Quality Commission, Finance and Audit Committee, Housing Commission, Library Commission, Park and Recreation Commission, and the Planning Commission. The city did receive approximately 30 applications. Some of those applicants chose to apply to multiple bodies, which was great. So we do have enough applicants to fill all of our advisory bodies. I would like to note that for the Finance and Audit Committee, those are designated two-year terms expiring April 30th of 2024. We have two environmental quality appointments to fill unexpired terms for 2023 and 2024, and one Housing Commission appointment to fill an unexpired vacancy ending April 30th of 2025. All other appointments will be for four-year terms expiring April 30th of 2026. That includes my introduction at this time and happy to return it to the council.
Thank you very much. Are there any clarifying questions from City Council before we take public comment? City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1, Consider Applicants and Make Appointments to Fill Vacancy on the Various City Advisory Bodies, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Karen Grove.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. As you know, I'm currently on the Housing Commission and finishing my first term. And I have applied to serve a second term, and I would be very happy and excited to serve. There are two open seats and several applicants, including myself. And I'm actually speaking tonight to encourage you to appoint Jacqueline Campos and Adriana Walker to the two open seats on the commission. I believe that both of them will bring valuable perspective and experience to the commission, and both of them come from a part of our city that has been consistently underrepresented on our commissions. And I want you to know that no matter what you decide tonight, I will stay engaged in supporting our housing element and housing policies. Sorry, my screen just covered my notes. Housing policies until we achieve a city that is integrated and diverse and equitable. So thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Mihal Bortnick.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mihal Bortnick, and I'm resident of Allied Arts. And I submitted my application to serve on the Housing Committee as well. But I noticed in the agenda packet that my application looks like I'm still using a typewriter. So I saw I'm not using typewriters, and I do know how to use a computer. I just filled out my application a few months ago before we got the fancy new system that makes applications look nice. And I do want to speak to the two applications that Commissioner Grove just mentioned. And here's why. So last night, the Planning Commissioner here has shared a Stanford study about K-12 students in San Mateo County who experienced housing insecurity, which massively expectedly impacts their education and especially graduation rates. And what jumps at me the most in that study is that out of the 22 school districts in San Mateo County, just one of those school districts has more than half of all the impacted students. And unfortunately, that's one of our school districts, the Ravenswood School District. And as you're also aware, Ravenswood School District areas where we as the city are planning to add millions of square feet of new office space that will bring in tens of thousands of new jobs, which will further squeeze the housing market and lead to even more housing insecurity and more hardship for our kids. So as we tried to figure out how to mitigate the impact of all that job growth on housing displacement, feels incredibly important and valuable to include people from the most impacted neighborhoods. So today, we have the two applicants with really deep ties to Bell Haven and who already have lots of community outreach experience and are willing to help us do a much better job listening and serving the people of Bell Haven. So I hope you do everything you can today to, and that's to help both of those applicants for the Housing Commission and help us be a better and more equitable city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Lynn Dan-Doe.
Good evening, City Council members. Get to my notes, sorry. My name is Lynn Dan-Doe, and I'm a resident of District 3. Get to my notes, sorry. My name is Lynn Dando, and I'm a resident of District Three, and I am applying for the Planning Commission. In the four years that my family and I have lived in Menlo Park, we've been so lucky to live within walking distance to a wealth of community amenities, such as the library, park, farmer's market in downtown. And in my walks, I've noticed a lot of changes, such as new construction along El Camino. And through following the Planning Commission meetings, I've also become aware of the projects in the Bayfront area, and there is more change to come. 3,000 additional units in the next housing cycle. Knowing this, as well as learning about the city's bold climate goal and desire for equity and diversity, I would like to serve on the Planning Commission to take on an active role in this critical time of growth, transformation, and opportunity. I am relatively new to Menlo Park and new to government service as well, so I know I have much to learn. I do believe that my professional and volunteer experience will help me be an effective planning commissioner. As an architect, I'm well aware of the role that architecture, design, and planning have in shaping a community. And more recently, I have been involved with volunteer efforts in which I helped connect community members with environmental issues in positive and creative ways that encourage conversation and education. I believe that that experience will serve me well as a planning commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Adriana.
Good evening. Can you all hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Adriana Walker. I have applied for the Housing Commission, and I am a resident of District One. Like Ms. Lynn said, I would have a lot to learn in the sense of governmental service. But as far as a resident of Menlo Park and a participant of BMR, and one who has orchestrated meetings between the city and my complex, I feel like I would be an asset and a bridge between the community and and the city. So I'm just honored to be a part, even in the sense of applying, and I look forward. I look forward to working with everyone, and even if I'm not selected, in staying involved in the rest of the changes in the city and just representation, whether on record or just being a voice for the community. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item F1. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Nash, we may continue.
Thank you very much. Before we go forward, I would just like to thank all of the many residents who have applied for our commission, as well as all the commissioners who have served and are currently serving. The commissions are an incredibly important part of our city government in advising the city council and providing a voice for residents and the expertise that they bring to from a resident's point of view to these decisions. And we do have a wonderful slate of applicants today. We do have more applicants than we have vacancies. And so I want to encourage everyone or thank everyone for applying and encourage everyone to stay involved. And if you are not selected this time, please do apply again. Many of us up here have gone through several rounds of applications before we first got on a commission and are now serving on council, and we certainly respect the process and very much hope that you will stay involved. And thank you all for your applications, and I'm excited to proceed with the selections. City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Going to share my screen in just a moment. I did want to provide some information on how the voting of our advisory bodies will go. We are recently adopt, the city council recently adopted a new policy. And in that is an update to how we actually appoint and vote on our advisory bodies. So when I state the city council member's name, I will ask that you provide me the names of the candidates you wish to appoint to that advisory body. You will also have the option to not select an applicant and leave a seat or seats vacant. After accepting all of the nominations from each of our city council members, the person or persons with the majority of the nominations will result in appointment. If there is a tie, we will proceed with another round of nominations. So at this time, I believe we will be starting with the Planning Commission appointments. We have two vacancies, both regular terms ending in April of 2026. So any questions from our city council before we begin our round of nominations and voting? Seeing none, I will start with Councilmember Combs. If you can, please provide me two names.
Thanks. Michael Meyer and Lynn Dando.
Thank you. Mayor Nash, two names?
Lynn Dando and David Thomas.
Thank you. City Councilmember Mueller is absent for this item. I will move to City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. Lynn Dando and David Thomas.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison, two names, please.
Thank you. Lynn Dando and Camille Kennedy.
Thank you. So at this time, we can appoint Lynn Dando, receiving four votes. And we will proceed to a second round of voting. Let me defer to my city attorney. So is it a majority vote or of the council or of the nominations given in this round, meaning two for Thomas and then one for Kennedy Meyer? Of course. So in the policy, we have it as once a candidate receives a majority vote, they are appointed. So is the definition of majority of this round of voting or of the city council? Because we have two votes for one applicant, and then we've got a single vote for two other applicants.
But if no one's gotten, only one candidate has a majority. So however you describe a majority, even if you say just of this vote, it seems like we would have to go to a second round.
For that third undershirt. Thank you, Councilmember Combs.
I was explaining it to myself.
We have a new city attorney.
Thank you collectively all. So we will go to a second round of voting. I'm going to remove Lynn from this list as Lynn has already been appointed. And I will start with City Councilmember Combs. One name, please.
Michael Meyer.
Thank you. Mayor Nash?
David Thomas.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor?
David Thomas.
Thank you. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Willison?
I'll switch. David Thomas.
Thank you. And so having a majority of three, congratulations, David Thomas. I'm appointed to the Planning Commission. Next, we will move on to our environmental quality. We have a total of four vacancies, two regular expiring in 2026, and one expiring in 2023, and a fourth expiring in 2024. For the EQC, what we will be doing is appointing a total of four candidates. And I will subsequently draw names out of the proverbial hat to distinguish which term they will be ending on. And those results I will be attaching to the minutes of this meeting. And with that, we will proceed, and I will be starting with City Councilmember Taylor. I will need four names, please.
Thank you. Nancy LaRoca Headley, Jeffrey Lynn, John McKenna, and Jeff Schmidt.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison?
Thank you. This is, I mean, they're all really hard, but I just want to thank everyone for applying. I'm going to go with Tom Cabot, Nancy Headley, Jeffrey Lynn, and John McKenna.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Tom Cabot, Nancy Headley, Mike Meyer, Michael Meyer, and Jeff Schmidt.
Thank you. Mayor Nash?
As has been said, this is a very difficult choice. We have many excellent candidates. Tom Cabot, Nancy LaRoca Headley, Jeffrey Lynn, and Jeff Schmidt.
Thank you. And if my math serves me correctly, it looks like our appointments will be Tom Cabot, Nancy LaRoca Headley, Jeffrey Lynn, and Jeff Schmidt. Congratulations. And we will be moving on to the Housing Commission in just one moment. Just want to make sure my lists are up to date. Perfect. Okay. Okay, so we are to our Housing Commission. And again, we've got two vacancies, one regular expiring 2026 and one unexpired vacancy through 2025. Again, we're asking the city council to appoint both of these applicants, and I will do a random draw for the for the term limits for these. And we will start the round with Mayor Nash.
Thank you. Jacqueline Campos and Adriana Walker.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor, two names?
Thank you. Jacqueline Campos and Adriana Walker.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison?
Thank you. Jacqueline Campos and Adriana Walker, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs, two names?
It's sort of moot. Karen Grove and Mihal Bortnick.
Thank you. And with that, we will be appointing Jacqueline Campos and Adriana Walker to the Housing Commission. And again, I will be doing the term limits following this meeting. Okay, we are moving on to Parks and Recreation. I'm going to be removing Jeffrey Lynn from this list as Jeffrey has been appointed. And with that, we are looking at one regular term ending for the Park and Recreation Commission. So Vice Mayor Willison, one name, please.
Kelsey Thoreau.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Roger Weiss.
Thank you. Mayor Nash?
Kelsey Thoreau.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. Kelsey Thoreau.
Thank you. And with that, Kelsey has been appointed.
And really quickly, so there has been an opening now on the Parks and Rec because of the but can we appoint that tonight or no? Because that has been noticed, and that is something for the real city attorney to answer at this moment.
So city attorney, David Thomas was appointed this evening to the Planning Commission. David Thomas is currently serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Can we appoint someone from this list into David Thomas's unexpired vacancy, which just occurred?
I believe, but I'd have to go back and look, and Judy, you and I might do this at a break, but I believe that we have to actually circulate once a vacancy occurs, so we wouldn't be able to do that tonight. We need to open it back up to provide more time, but if the council will give me a minute, I can hold on.
Actually, now that you say it, that is how it is written in 22-004. We would have to do a full recruitment. And of course, I will invite, you know, all who have applied to reapply, and I can always reuse applications as long as I have their consent. Thank you, city attorney. All right, we are going to move on to our Library Commission, where we have two vacancies, both regular terms ending in 2026. Starting with City Councilmember Taylor, may I have two names, please?
Thank you. Alan Cohen and Sarah Zaslow.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Alan Cohen and Sarah Zaslow.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Alan Cohen and Sarah Zaslow.
Thank you. Mayor Nash?
Alan Cohen and Sarah Zaslow.
Thank you. And with that, Alan and Sarah will be appointed and reappointed to the Library Commission. So moving along, we are to our Complete Streets Commission. We do have a total of four regular terms ending in 2026. We did receive three applications for the Complete Streets Commission. Again, you can't, the city council's discretion to either fill three seats or or less, you can also pull from the pool of applicants who have not yet been selected, and we can request that they serve on the Complete Streets Commission. But I will let each of you have that opportunity now. And so at this time, with having four vacancies and three applicants, Mayor Nash?
Thank you. I actually meant to bring this up earlier, and I would like to look to the city attorney. I know that there has been discussion about having this commission reduced from nine members to seven members. And this seems like an opportune time to do that with I know that that was, well, I believe that that was a staff recommendation at one time. Is that something that would, how would we go about doing that? And is that something that we could take, discuss at council level?
So we need to bring back an amendment to the policy that establishes the number of commissioners. That's not agendized for tonight. However, the council could not appoint could appoint the then a number less than four tonight so as to leave a vacancy, and we could then go back and revise the policies to reduce it to seven, and there would already be two vacancies. So we wouldn't need to terminate a term earlier or wait till the term expires.
Thank you. Is there any, is that something that if anyone wants to discuss it right now at council level, we could do that?
So procedurally, should we just, so if we're interested in shrinking it, we should only fill to seven, so two more. And then that, and then we would give direction to come back, or should we give the direction to come back now? What's the order of this process?
Well, like I said, it's up to you. If you would like to, if you all want to discuss reducing the commission to seven, that's fine. And then provide us direction to return with an amendment to the policy. When we leave the meeting this evening, it's going to be a nine-person board with two vacancies if you want to proceed in that manner. And then you would just appoint. We have four, so you'd appoint two as a We have four, so you'd appoint two as a, well, there's only three to appoint, but that would leave two vacancies.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be that we go through this first round and see, like, if, how many candidates get a majority? And if, like if two candidates, only two candidates get a majority, then, then we can sort of then make a decision to, to, you know, not take any further action. But obviously, if it, if it's a little bit jumbled, then, then that, that may make things a little messier. But, but we could sort of in the first round of voting, it could be cleared up with just two candidates getting the majority.
Thank you. Agreed. So I would, I am starting off, and I would, will vote for two candidates, Sally Cole and Christopher Coleman, and will not vote for the remaining two.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. Sally Cole and Christopher Coleman.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison?
I am also only voting for two, Sally Cole and Christopher Coleman.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Sally Cole and Christopher Coleman.
Thank you.
So we would like to have this brought back to council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Nash. So we will be appointing Sally Cole, or reappointing Sally Cole and appointing Christopher Coleman, and then staff will return an item regarding the size of the Complete Streets Commission for action and discussion. Thank you. And our last appointments of the evening is for the Finance and Audit Committee. I see two regular terms ending in 2024. We received one applicant for this vacancy. Again, the City Council's discretion as to how and who to appoint. So with that, did the City Council wish to do the round of voting as it is on the screen, or was there a desire to add applicants from other advisory bodies who may not have been appointed?
So I would, I actually like having candidates state an interest in a commission before they're appointed. I'm perfectly willing to discuss this if someone else has a different preference. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I was thinking the same thing, but if I remember, City Clerk Karen stated that if we appointed someone who hadn't applied, that they would check in with the, the candidate to see if they were even interested. If we did not do that, I'm not sure how we would move forward.
I would like to say, because we're going to be bringing back a park and rec appointment, it is possible to also re-recruit for the FAC and see if we can drum up interest for a vacancy there, if the City Council wanted to do a vote on our applicant tonight. And again, just that we can return that after the recruitment for the PRC.
I am looking for, if there's any other interest, I will just state, I would like to go out for a new recruitment because I feel that the current applicant, well, I would like, if he is interested in serving on the Finance and Audit Committee, I would like a reason why that the person was interested in sitting on the Finance and Audit Committee, which was not clear from the application.
I mean, so the mayor is, is not out there alone. I, I'm more than willing to proceed and vote for the candidate, but I have some concerns because he first applies to all of the commissions. And in theory, there's nothing wrong with that, if, if you have very specific and targeted and bespoke reasons for why you want to be in application for all of them. But the other thing is, is that he talked a lot about wanting to help, you know, revitalize downtown and sort of get businesses in some of those currently empty storefronts. And if that's like the main motivation to get involved, then the Finance and Audit Committee is the last place you want to be. And so that, that's my concern. I, I mean, I would be willing to appoint him and then like let him come to that realization. Or I would be willing to, as the mayor suggested, hold off appointing the vacancies. Let Mr. DeMoss sort of think about the very specific reasons why he wants to be on the Finance and Audit Committee and reapply in, in connection with that.
So my preference would be to hold off appointments and to ask for people to, to applica, applicants to apply for the Finance and Audit Committee. It is a very important committee, and we do need some strong applications, applicants. And I guess my one question is how this affects the committee. I believe that there actually was going to be a meeting, and does this, to the city manager, is there any concern about not appointing someone at this time?
Let's see, based, based off my understanding, it'd be better to make sure we get it right than to rush the appointment. So if there is upcoming meetings, seven-member body, four people would be a quorum, so the, the committee could indeed meet, so you're not jeopardizing that. But it may be potentially better to wait on the next, the scheduling of that upcoming meeting until the appointments could be made. So I guess one question is whether or not we would, could potentially target May 10th for appointments, or would we need some additional time to May 24th? Because if you're focused on the people who did apply for the various bodies, but did, were not successful this evening, that's a more targeted outreach. Of course, we could open it up to some others in the community that may be interested, but maybe not to the full extent that we did previously.
City Clerk Karen, is there a open window when we have to have application, if we have to open a window for a certain period of time, or is this something where in this situation, we do not need to have the a specific length of time?
I am checking the policy now. The policy states that the application period will normally run for a period of four weeks from the date the vacancy occurs. I do know historically, when we have done re-recruitments following annual appointment, I've done two-week recruitments. And because the policy doesn't say it has to be four weeks, I'm more than happy to run a two-week recruitment. And if we were to open that tomorrow, that recruitment would run until Wednesday, May 11th. I can probably get it on the last meeting in May's agenda. If we, we wanted to run a shorter recruitment, we could, you know, closing it on the 4th, only because agenda packet for the 10th goes out the 5th, and I'd need all applications in for that.
I would like to propose that we run both Finance and Audit and Park and Parks and Rec on a shorter timeline, given that we've already, people have had plenty of time to apply and that we go ahead for the, targeting the 4th, as you just stated.
Perfect. So I will target a date that is as far out as possible to get it on the May 10th agenda for appointments.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Okay, so I do believe that concludes our appointments. Congratulations to everyone that was appointed. And again, echoing the thanks of the City Council for all of our applicants, you'll be hearing from me soon as we are going to be doing a new recruitment for Parks and Recreation, as well as Finance and Audit. And then as a reminder, for those appointed to the Environmental Quality and Housing Commissions, I will be in touch tomorrow related to the terms that will be randomly selected. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I just really wanted to quickly commend Commissioner Grove for her statement. I, I think, as I think it's clear for anyone who follows these things, Commissioner Grove and I are on usually not the same side as, as far as our, where we stand on issues. But her commitment to Menlo Park is, is really always, always clear. And I think her commitment to representation across the spectrum was clear tonight. And I don't think, again, I haven't been involved in Menlo Park's community in, in city forever, although it feels like that sometime. But I've never seen where a, a commission nominee suggested that they not be appointed, and that instead you go with other candidates. So hats off, off to her, and, and really sort of showing her, her values.
Thank you. And I'd also like to add Mihal Bortnick, who also had the same sentiment. Thank you very much. The next item is the study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the county, City Council for action. The study session item tonight is G1, Provide Direction on Pedestrian and Bicycle Pilot Improvements to be included in the Ravenswood Avenue Resurfacing Project. To introduce the item is Senior Transportation Engineer Kevin Chen.
Good evening, Mayor Nash. Happy to be here tonight. First of all, just want to make sure that my mic is coming through loud and clear.
Yes, it is.
Right, thank you very much. And then moving on to the presentation, if you can just give me a second here. Okay, if I can have another confirmation that you're seeing my presentation in full screen mode, please.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. So good evening. Again, my name is Kevin Chen, Senior Transportation Engineer with the City of Menlo Park. Very excited to be here tonight to present this pilot project in front of you, so definitely. And as the mayor had mentioned before, this is a study session, looking for guidance and feedback from, for the council as well. So briefly, wanted to go over the background of the project, and of course, followed by some of the reevaluation as, as I might go into more in-depth into the presentation. We're going to touch both on the resurfacing project, but as well as the key element tonight, which is the pilot project, which really comes down to the final recommendation and some of the next steps necessary to proceed with this effort. As many of you know, Ravenswood is a key piece of West Route for the city. It connects between Alcamino Real to Middle, Middlefield. It's also a really good corridor that connects major destinations within the city. At Middlefield, we have MA High School, and of course, as we get to Alcamino Real, it's a major connection to downtown. So it really serves quite a few stakeholders and, and users for, for the city that, that is really unique to Ravenswood. As, as we mentioned in the staff report, one of our key elements here is the street resurfacing. So on July 28th of 2020, the City Council adopted a resolution for the five-year CIP program, the Capital Improvement Program. And in it, included an effort to resurface Ravenswood between Alma and Middlefield. And as a result of that, one of our practice really is that when there, when there's an opportunity to look at a street roadway, we wanted to do so to make sure that it is in, in, indeed a complete street. One of the efforts that the, the City Council has adopted a policy for, and therefore, we are taking any, any opportunity to do so. So as I mentioned, as a result of the street resurfacing, staff took an opportunity to look at that particular section of Ravenswood and to see if we can improve it better in, for the complete streets. And with that in mind, staff went to the Street, Complete Streets Commission on May 12th of 2021, again, with an eye towards how can we potentially improve this corridor. And at the end of that meeting, staff recommendation, which was also supported by the commission at the time, is that we are going to go ahead and install a permanent bike lane on the eastbound direction. Doing so would effectively complete the entire roadway to have a bike facility, biking facility on the eastbound. However, the westbound will continue to have a bike route, but then look for future opportunities to see if we can improve that further. And of course, coming to the, the main reason for us here tonight, the main factor for the staff to really look at the resurfacing project, first and foremost, is due to the application that I was sorry, I put in back in May 2021 for, to redevelop their 333 Ravenswood parcel. It's currently called a Parkline Project, while we recognize that is at the very beginning of the, the process. The entire parcel itself does from a majority of Ravenswood, specifically between Laurel to Middlefield. As a, as a, as a result of that, staff wanted to make sure that we are judicious with our resources, and whether or not there's an opportunity to shift some of the initial resurfacing attention to a different corridor. And as a result of that, we, staff is recommending that we remove the section between Laurel to Middlefield, but instead you, I dedicate that resource to the section of Ravenswood between Alcamino and Alma. So effectively, we're reckon, we are moving forward with the resurfacing project of Ravenswood between Alcamino and Alma. I'm sorry, Alcamino and Laurel. And as I mentioned before, this does provide us an opportunity to look at the street configuration to see if we can further dedicate some of the the resources to make the street as complete as possible. And a couple of the, the elements that really came to mind, first and foremost, is pedestrian safety crossing, specifically at Alma Street. As some of you know, it is currently a uncontrolled crossing. It does connect the Caution Station to the main campus, main CDR campus and the library. So that is definitely an area that we, we wanted to, to focus on. And also, there's an opportunity to look at some of the volume uncertainties of course with COVID-19, and some of the private and public entities adopting a hybrid system. The volume certainly is creating an opportunity for us to revisit some of the congestion and, and operations of the road. So within the next two or three slides, there will be some recommendations, but I'm going to go through them one by one. The first one is with an eye towards the pedestrian improvement at Ravenswood and Alma. Certainly, we recognize some of the feedback that we got from residents over the years is the, the condition of the crossing, and whether or not it's an opportunity to improve it. We, we, so with the shift of the focus, of shifting the focus to the resurfacing project, we were able to take a, a deeper dive into specifically Ravenswood and Alma. And here in front of you are some of our recommendations. On the north side, we're recommending bulbouts and medians to further reduce the crossing distance. On the south side, we are recommending tightening up the turning radius generally by a, an exercise used to, to reduce turning vehicles, and, and hopefully creating a, a safer crossing environment for, for folks. There's also some feedback about the lighting improvement, which we'll, we'll take a closer look as part of this exercise as well. But, but mainly, one of the key elements that we wanted to see how we can further improve is that, that Alma crossing. And again, generally speaking, the, the speed that's traveling on Ravenswood, while it is signed at 25 miles per hour, sometimes it does get a little bit higher, so we do get feedback about the crossing. Maybe wanting more safety to initiate the crossing experience. So with the bulbout, we wanted to make sure that there's crossing improvements for Alma, but we also wanted to make sure but we also wanted to make sure that we improve Ravenswood as well. Not just looking at pedestrians, but also bicycles. So staff took an opportunity, took this opportunity to evaluate each section of Ravenswood between Alcamino to Laurel. And here is a table in front of you. I do want to just specifically point at Alma and Noel because it does require some shifting of a, the travel lane in order to accommodate any potential improvement that we're recommending tonight. Versus on, on the other segments, there's generally fairly minimal impact to the road configuration. So here is a, a great illustration of what staff is recommending tonight. Specifically, I do want to point out the improvements at the intersection and then also on the roadway itself. The color scheme represents, the, the purple color represents the pilot recommendation. And I'll go into some of the details a little bit later too, but really what we are recommending as part of the pilot is by shifting the existing expansion points of right now. If the right now, the expansion of the westbound direction from one lane to two occurs somewhere close to Noel. If we simply shift that, that point to Alma, we can improve both pedestrian and bicycle infrastructures. So as, as a, as a result of that, staff is seeing a great opportunity to, to move forward with this pilot program. So the, the next couple of slides are going to be talking into the pilot. So the first one here is really highlighting what the pilot's about, as I mentioned before. We are, the pilot is really to address some of the pedestrian and bicycle improvements that could be happening by simply shifting the travel expansion point from Noel to Alma Street, which is about 300 feet or so. Doing so would allow us to widen the existing pedestrian refuge. As you can see from the image below, it is currently a, about a six-inch curve. Not really so much of a refuge. So if we shift that, that point, it allows us to expand the pedestrian refuge. Furthermore, it also allows us to install a bike lane in the westbound direction between Noel and Alma, which then can get carried over almost all the way to Alcamino Real. And doing so would essentially complete the remaining gap of Ravenswood. Meaning there will be a bike lane in the westbound direction on the entire stretch of Ravenswood. Of course, with any pilots, we wanted to make sure that the pilot at the end of the day is successful. Recognizing that there are definitely some challenges with it as well. So here is a table that represents some of the metrics that staff has developed us. And also how we intend to make those observations and collect the data and some of the variables that we'll be looking into to measure the successful or the effectiveness of the pilot program. So definitely happy to answer any questions that you might have. But here is a, a table that is also included in the staff report as well. So before I go into next step, just wanted to provide some feedback for your reference. First and foremost, we went to the Complete Streets Commission on March 9th. You know, so generally, generally speaking, the Complete Streets Commission recommended the, the pilot program to move forward. Additionally, they also want the staff to really make sure that we engage the public and make sure that the survey captures all the user groups that could be benefiting from, from, from this improvement as well. So that's definitely something that we'll be incorporating as part of the, the pilot evaluation as well. We also received one community email since the publication of this package agenda. It's a gentleman that is, a resident of this on Noel and spoke favorably to the recommendation to the pilot. So here is the, the next steps necessary to move this effort forward. First and foremost, staff is looking for any direction from the city council on the pilot itself. So just to, we hopefully reminds you, the pilot itself is, we are, what we are recommending is shifting the, the expansion point from Noel in the westbound direction from Noel to Alma. Doing so would allow us to test two particular improvements. First and foremost, widening the pedestrian refuge for the crosswalk that is currently serving Alma Street. And then secondarily, also allowing us to install a bike lane in the westbound direction, specifically between Noel and Alma, but then being able to essentially connect the, the gap, the missing gap for the westbound direction. Of course, doing so, being a pilot, we're recommending temporary materials such as striping and flexible post. If the pilot is successful, we'll come back and recommend a more permanent feature for the installation. Of course, with any pilot, we want to make sure that there is the authorization from the city council to staff to remove it if there's any significant safety or congestion challenges that is, that, that gets detected as a result of the pilot. So certainly want to make sure that we have that authority. And then finally, just to quickly highlight the, the schedule for the resurfacing project, we're anticipating to complete design by May of 2022. Of course, once the design is completed, we anticipate to go out to bid with a anticipated construction completion by late summer of 2022, so later this year. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions at the council? Councilmember Mueller, and thank you for joining us.
Thanks. Yeah, and I appreciate your patience. I saw that this evening, so. I do have a question, and it's the thing that confuses me a little bit, Kevin, is the, if there's any significant safety challenges or congestion challenges than you in the pilot. And the thing that I want to understand is are there significant safety issues right now leading to the pilot? Because kind of puts that on balance, right? Like, is this, is this, are you seeing a significant safety issue there right now with people using it that's leading to the pilot? Or is this something that where we're just trying to design the ideal street?
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller for that question. I, I would say the, oh, might not be the ideal answer, but I think there definitely, the answer is yes to both questions. First and foremost, we're definitely receiving a lot of feedback. Just generally their people's experience crossing the Alma Crossing specifically and also riding the bikes, particularly in the westbound direction, given that there is a long stretch of roadway that they're sharing right now. I will also acknowledge that since we have, we have to shift the expansion point a little bit, there are certainly a potential for congestion because of the fact that we're shifting it, which is why we wanted to make sure that the city council authorized staff to potentially terminate the pilot project if there is some additional unforeseen safety or congestion issues.
And are the safety issues that are occurring right now, are they just, are they observed? Are there any metrics that have been recorded or any data that we can point to?
Yeah, certainly, we had looked at the, I would say mostly based on feedback from the community members, but as well as staff member observations. I used to take the train, pre-COVID time, I used to take the train to the city hall. A lot of my colleagues do as well or used to do as well. So I, I kind of cross that crossing firsthand experience and, and of course during lunchtime, wanted to frequent the downtown business, so I would use that crossing quite a bit as well. I would say definitely a lot of observation went into this and validating some of the feedbacks that we got from the residents as well.
All right. So that's, so that falls in the category of engineering judgment? Is that what?
Yes, definitely. We also looked at some of the, we'll also be making sure that we look at collision data. If the pilot is something that we want to move forward to, we'll make sure to compare the before and after collision. But so far, I would say kind of the more of the observations are coming from the residents.
And when you say they're coming from the residents, are they, and what, in what? How are those being collected? Are they coming, are they coming in emails to staff? Are they coming through a commission?
Mueller, actually, would you mind if we get public comments, then we'll actually get into the discussion later?
These are questions I have. I'm trying to understand it. Okay. Thank you. Can, can you tell me how, how you've collected the information?
Yeah, definitely. So some form of emails, obviously. Also, I serve on the, I serve as a liaison on the Complete Streets Commission. And then that is definitely a topic of discussion. While not in a kind of a formal Agendas format, definitely periodically will occur. And also just anecdotally being out there talking to residents about different issues. And this, this being an issue that get brought up periodically. So there's all, all different forms of communication being.
Okay, so those are the clarifying questions I have for you. And I'm just going to say real quickly, when this does come back, the one thing I'd ask is that all of that information be put into encapsulated? Because what's going to happen is when the congestion happens, we're going to be asked why this happened. And so I'm going to, we're going to need very clearly spelled out what the, what was behind the engineering judgment.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Councilmember Mueller, I have the Transportation Master Plan open on my computer screen here with a map of pedestrian collisions. And you can see quite a large circle, which is a heat map, showing that intersection being, have data.
Councilmember Wilson, first, I wasn't questioning that. I was asking for, I was asking actually for staff to have that information available to the public. And, and so thank you for pointing to it. I wasn't questioning the need, but what I am saying to professional staff is we're going to need the information available to explain it to the public.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our study session item G1, Provide Direction on Pedestrian and Bicycle Pilot Improvements to be Included in the Ravenswood Avenue Resurfacing Project, to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Adina Levin, Menlo Park President. And I was on the Complete Streets Commission when this came to commission. I have since turned out and wanted to report, so. But at the time that this had come to the Complete Streets Commission, it came back and the first time it came to us, like we really, really wrestled with this area because of, you know, the amount of room that was available and also looking long-term at the potential for congestion and it was just really, really difficult. And so I personally was really thrilled when, when staff brought back the concept of a pilot. For one thing, you know, with COVID and the changes in travel patterns, we are, you know, seeing around the region a change potentially in commute patterns that are less peaky. And, you know, there's, there's still, you know, quite a bit of driving, but it may not be, you know, as much concentrated in the same number of a few minutes. And so having a pilot at this time is a great time to experiment with the opportunity for a safety improvement at someplace that is a hotspot in our transportation master plan and something that's an important route for people walking and bicycling. That is a part where there's a lot of anxiety and, and, and safety concern. And also in the more medium term, now that SRI has come forward with their plans, there's opportunities in the medium term for even, you know, more significant safety improvements in conjunction with that project. So I would urge you to support the staff recommendation and be able to learn from the pilot as to, you know, how the balance of safety improvements and accommodating vehicles goes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jackie Sebrian.
Thank you. I'm not going to be nearly as articulate about it all as Adina was. So I'm Jackie Sebrian. I'm a longtime member of the community and I've been on, I'm currently on the Complete Streets Commission, but just speaking for myself. So as a user of that section of roadway on my bike, 98% of the time, I'm fully in support of the pilot. This particular section of roadway is quite often a conflict with cars and bikes as they try, as we get to the sharepoint and bikes regu, cars regularly, sorry, like jet in front so that they can somehow not be behind you while they wait. And then it's worse for pedestrians because they have to try to cross four lanes of moving traffic. And as you all well know, the speeds in our town are up and they're unsafe on all of our roadways. So I think like I have often put my hand out to signal to cars that there are pedestrians and they should slow down for them, but. So anyway, I am in support of the pilot. I, I do see the caution about looking at, keeping an eye on the congestion and seeing what we can do about it. But also, again, the speeds on that road for a main corridor of bikes are a little high. And I know a number of parents who don't let their kids ride to school because it doesn't feel safe for them because cars drive too fast. And so I am all in favor of whatever we can do to make our town be more bike pedestrian friendly so we can lower that carbon footprint. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Bill Kirsch.
Sorry, I'm, I think I unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
City council members, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know all these agenda items are difficult. I am strongly in favor of moving forward on this pilot. I think all of you know, all of you city council members know, if you've crossed Ravenswood at Alma, that is one of the most dangerous crossings we have in the city. And it's one of the most important crossings. And also Ravenswood is still a main bike corridor, not only for MA students for a lot, but for a lot of folks that are accessing Burgess Park and other areas in the city. And we don't have a, a good bike lane going eastbound. When this was brought to our, my, to our commission, I was on Complete Streets, turned out last year. The city staff at that time did not want to make these, did not want to make this crossing safer because there are projections of queuing time for the automobile in 2040 were forecasted to be like 15, we're going to add 15 or 20 seconds more to the wait. And I couldn't believe that a city that says they are a complete street city, a vision zero city, a city that has a very, a very active climate action plan, which I applaud. But to me, if you're not addressing our infrastructure to make it safer for cycling and walking and to try to get folks that can out of the automobile and give them options, as you just heard from Jackie Sebrian, she knows a parent that won't let their kids ride their bikes. So that means there's another car on the road. So I think we need to walk the talk. If we're to get carbon neutral, we have to approve this pilot and move aggressively everywhere we can in this city to make cycling and walking safer so that we give folks more options to move around this town. I went to the Park Line Community Meeting, I think it was last year. All those folks told me that that, that was a transit oriented development that it was going to be. And I said, how so? I said, they're going to have to navigate across Ravenswood, one of the most dangerous crossings in the city. And there is not a continual, continuous bike lane that would take them westbound towards the. And there is not a continual, continuous bike lane that would take them, uh, westbound towards the, uh, Caltrain. So anyway, city council members, thank you so much for your service. City staff, thank you for bringing back a good, solid plan to make our city safer. And please let's move forward with this pilot as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our study session item G1. Okay, our next speaker's name is coming up as Pixel four. I'll ask if you can state your name for the record, please.
Hi, this is Katie Beruzzi calling on my phone for a change. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes, thanks, Katie.
Awesome. Um, so I don't want to belabor this point, but I, some of you know that I'm kind of a freak about looking up data. And so that intersection that Ravenswood and Alma really does have one of the highest accident rates, um, in our city. And it's especially bad for people actually trying to cross Ravenswood. Um, and I think it's a little ironic because it's one of the, it's got like the gateway to Menlo Park right there. Um, so I, um, when we looked at this at Complete Streets, I was pleased with any staff recommendations to, to make it safer. Um, I'm actually frankly more concerned about people trying to get across Ravenswood than I am trying to get along Ravenswood. But I agree with, with, um, Jackie Sebrian that, um, you know, as soon as we can facilitate it being safer for people to travel along Ravenswood, that's a good thing too. But in general, I think finding ways to slow the speeds, narrow the crossings and provide more space for pedestrians to safely get across. And also all the kids that tend to ride across that crosswalk on their way to school in the morning, um, is a good thing to do. And pilots are, you know, we did a pilot there after the train, the horrible tragedy with the train and, um, and, and then we tweaked it. Um, a, a few years ago, when I was actually, um, still living in the field of X at the time. And I think that reduced some of the, um, conflicts with cars. Uh, so I have faith that our city is good at doing pilots and tweaking them when we need to. And I appreciate your considering this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker will be Kyle Ariano.
Yes, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Terrific. Thank you. Um, Kyle Ariano, resident of the Willows. I hadn't intended to comment tonight. I was waiting for, um, another item on the agenda, but I, I, I do support this, uh, project. Uh, for all of the reasons the previous commenters, uh, stated. I, I did also want to mention, uh, the elephant in the room, which is the train crossing. Uh, a lot of folks have brought up safety and congestion as, uh, uh, areas of, uh, for our metrics and areas of concern. But I, I think when you think about what the congestion and safety issues really are for, for both the cyclists, pedestrians and, and cars, it's, it's all the bottleneck around, uh, the, the rail crossing. And so, um, I support this project. I would also request that the council, uh, reprioritize, um, the, uh, the grade separation at Ravenswood as well as, um, Oak Grove. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our close, or on our study session item G1. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. So we are now open for city council discussion. Would anyone like to start it off? I will call on Vice Mayor Willis and then.
Okay, um, so I am, uh, really, really excited about this pilot. Um, this has been a huge issue. It's been a head scratcher for me since the day I moved to town, how this intersection could, could be like this. Um, I'm, I'm just really, um, in support of, uh, what the staff recommendations are. I have, um, a couple of questions, um, about the pilot. Um, one is, uh, when will it end? So when will the, um, data be collected? And two, um, I get a threshold for safety, like if something happens or it's observed not to be safe, but I don't know what the threshold for congestion is. Um, so I'm much more, um, in favor of giving staff that, um, authority to pull things at a safety thing, but for a congestion related end to the pilot, I'm, I'm want to understand more about what a staff has in mind about a threshold of that tipping point of when the congestion is, is too bad that would need to be stopped before coming to council.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Wallace. And so to answer your, uh, first question about the duration of the pilot, we are currently anticipating it to be, um, a, a six month pilot. However, we do want to account for the fact that Ravenswood does serve, um, Menlo Atherton High School kids as well as kids that are going to Hill, Hillview Middle School. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that the duration is long enough to capture, um, those traffic as well. So currently we are proposing a six month pilot. However, we are seeking approval to potentially expanding that pilot, uh, if necessary, to fully capture, uh, those users as well and their experiences. Um, and, and to your question about, uh, the congestion threshold, uh, certainly it is a little bit of a tricky one as well because, uh, as one of the come to mention, we do have a gate down. Uh, sometimes the gate does come down, uh, significantly longer than just due to the, the activity that's on the track. Um, so, so right now what we are considering is just to, um, to make sure that we are keeping a closer eye, close eye on the congestion. Um, you know, typically we'll want to look at how it impacts the operation of Laurel, particularly during the peak hours, uh, the frequency of, of the impact, if it does, uh, go all the way to Laurel. Uh, and also just, um, the reasoning, uh, behind it as well. Cause as I mentioned, there are multiple factors that could, that could be, um, factored into why the congestion, um, it is, uh, as far back as, um, perhaps Laurel.
Mayor Nash. Okay. Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Chen. And certainly we all remember, um, the congestion problems that happen in the Willows and appreciate, um, staff acting, um, to alleviate that. And if that kind of situation arises, you know, obviously we'd want you to take care of it. Um, but, um, anything kind of less than congestion, congested Getian, uh, kind of Armageddon congestion, it'd be great for it to come to council, um, to, to report on the, the congestion threshold. Um, and in terms of the pilot, um, six months sounds good. Another idea would be kind of the school year. Um, letting it run. And then to that point, I just want to note that, um, MA High School starts August 17th and Hillview, the middle school, starting August 18th. So I know there's a note in there to get it done, um, late summer, early fall. Um, I know you guys are going as fast as you can, but I just wanted to, if there's any way to get it in there. Um, but if not, it is what it is. But again, um, thank you for making this happen. And this is going to be huge for anyone, uh, wanting to get around, um, Civic Center, Library, Burgess, Cafe Baroni, Guild, Train Station, High Schools, Middle School, everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mayor Nash. You know, I, I just want to point out, uh, uh, obviously I think, um, uh, a lot of the issues with safety, um, at this intersection has to do with it being just incredibly poorly designed. Um, and that lots is happening there and, um, you wouldn't design an intersection or streets like this. Um, today, obviously I know there is, and again, you have like a lack of alignment. You have a street paralleling the, 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 the train tracks. And again, this all dates, uh, obviously to, um, a, a time when our, um, our thinking on traffic engineering, uh, was not as, uh, advanced and thought out as it is now. And so, I mean, my concern and not necessarily I'm, I'm saying I'm in opposition, um, to the pilot is that I, I don't know that this resolves those safety issues. Because like I say, I think a lot of them are inherent into, um, one of the public comments. Um, I, I think they go away with, with, with great separation. Again, I know, um, uh, that is more than a notion. Um, and, and sometime, some, sometime away, in some millions and millions of dollars away. Um, but, but I do think, I do think we have to be a little bit, uh, honest that, that, um, I don't know that there are lots that make this much safer. We'll see, uh, if this does that. Um, uh, but, but, um, but, but I don't know if at the end of the day, again, like you said, it's, it's gonna, it, it's the solution to the problem that exists here. And so that's, that's my concern. It is a, a solution based on a lot of at this moment, what we think of as things about safety and, um, but, but I don't know if it solves this problem. Uh, and, and so I just wanted to share my comments. I'm not saying I'm opposed, but I do want to put that out there that I have, I have, I have concerns. Um, especially because there will be some trade offs with, um, with, with sort of traffic at certain times being backed up more. Um, and again, y- y- you know, I think there will be some issues that, that crop up just by the fact of, like I say, what I think is already inherently a, um, and on self-safe intersection, we're adding multiple new elements, um, that people will have to adjust. And so there'll be that adjustment period, maybe after that, then, then, then it'll be fine. But, but I wouldn't be surprised if, if actually, um, this at least in the immediate aftermath of this pilot becomes a, a, a less safe or, um, intersection than it is, um, in the status quo.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Combs. Cause honestly, when I look at this intersection, even with these improvements, and the improvements are good that we're trying to make it safer. But the real issue here is it's an on-demand crosswalk that you would really see in your school or somewhere in a suburban environment on a major thoroughfare on Menlo Park. It's the major thoroughfare and the, as the entry into the cit- into a portion of the city, El Camino Real. And it's an on-demand crosswalk that kids press a button and then walk into traffic with cars going as fast as they can to get through the city. And that's the real problem with this intersection. And so when I look at this design, I think, okay, well, we've made the design safer, but we're still living in the fantasy world that we're in the 1950s. And we have an on-demand crosswalk in a major intersection. And so, you know, I'm a little concerned when I look at it that a kid's going to get the, you know, that, so, I mean, I'm a little concerned in it that we're, I mean, it's good. We're making it safer. Are we inviting people to use it more? I see people, what I see happening at that crosswalk more often than not is people on their bike. And then they're trying to make a decision whether they're going to get off their bike and press the button or not, or whether they're going to keep going through. I've done it as an adult and I see kids do it. And I, you know, basically people are on their bike. They're coming from Burgess. They're trying to figure out how to get across to get to the safety on the other side. They look both ways, is a car coming or not? And then they decide whether or not they're going to hit the button or not. And even when you do hit the button, sometimes people are going so fast, they don't stop. So, you know, I think at some point we're going to have to bite the bullet and say, look, we need a controlled light here. We're, this is not 1967 anymore. And as much as it kills us, it has to happen and it has to be timed with the, with the trains on the other side. So, you know, that's why when I look at this, I'm like, okay, it's great. We're putting in, we're putting in people to someplace for someone to stand. But I've never actually seen someone getting stuck in the middle of that when the lights are on. What I see happening is people stepping out and cars not stopping. So, uh, those are my comments.
Councilmember Taylor, do you have any comments?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I think a lot of good comments have been made, um, that it is an inherently difficult intersection. And, um, I am in favor of the pilot going forward. Um, I would like to see staff continue to, um, review it and see what other changes could, um, possibly be made. And they may be major changes and how all that fits into, um, grade separation. And, um, I would love to see grade separation on as fast a track as it can be, which I know is, um, wishful thinking, but whatever we can do to, um, expedite that, I think would be beneficial, um, for many reasons, um, many, many reasons. And now is the time to be doing this while the government is, um, will have money, millions of dollars available. And so I would love to see our grade separation, um, move forward as well. So, um, I guess, could we please get the information that is needed for, um, the recap of the direction that's needed? Or in fact, do, do you have the direction that is needed?
A great, Mayor Nash. Yeah, I think we, we definitely got a lot of, um, great directions tonight. So, um, I think we definitely have a, a good strategy moving forward.
Vice Mayor Willis.
Yeah, um, thank you. I, I do want to say, um, you know, again, it's like, what's the ideal safety versus what we can accomplish now, given this is a repaving project? And so, um, I just want to, um, reflect some of my colleagues', um, comments, you know, ideally grade separation. Next best would be a light. I'm totally in support of that. Next best would be improving what we kind of have, which is where I think we're at. Um, but I, I think this is, um, only a step, um, to, to making it better. I wish things went faster and we could go for the, the perfect solution right away. Um, but, um, I think the pilot, given our scope right now is, is the right move. So thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah. So here's my only concern on this is that what we are going to have severe, when all this goes down, we're going to have severe congestion issues already. And so my concern is that, so the best solution in my humble opinion, and I'm not a transportation, is that you put in a light and then you have controlled crossing with it stopped. And if you do that, then you don't have to do modifications that actually create more congestion. And so, because we are going to have, when, uh, we are in the near, very near future, going to have trouble just getting across to El Camino. And so, you know, doing a pilot now is fine, but the only thing I'd say is m- maybe not forever with that, with that design. So as soon as, you know, I, I actually, you know, uh, I've already said, but as soon as we can move to the light configuration and get that figured out so we get, because when, and what's going to happen in the future is when the great, great separation or not, we're going to get to a point where people are going to be wanting to get through that to the other side. So, pretty quick.
Very much agree, and especially as Park Line comes on and USGS and all these other, uh, developments that are in the pipeline. Thank you. All right. So moving on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar item, H1, city council meeting minutes. H2, a resolution to continue conducting city council and advisory body meetings remotely. H3, adoption of a resolution for the 2021 amended WSA with city and county of San Francisco, and a resolution approving a minimum purchase transfer from the city of Mountain View and city of East Palo Alto. Or H4, adopt the fiscal year 2022, 23 budget principles and confirming direction on potential service level enhancements in the CIP. To engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, H1 through H4. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are, is there any city council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I, I have a question on, give me one second. Uh, so it's, um, uh, adopt fiscal year 2022, 23 budget principles. And so I just, because I saw that there was a question that staff had received from a council member about enrollment in the gymnastics program, uh, which about enrollment in the gymnastics program, of which you answered and provided transparency to all of council. And so then, I hate to be, to beat a dead horse about this. So, but what is staff's understanding as far as the direction regarding the gymnastics program? Am I not on the right thing? Am I, is that not consent calendar?
No, you are part, you are exactly right. Okay, it is part of the consent calendar. City manager.
Yes, I can take the first stab at that. So I can kind of go to the sheet, page H4.6 4.5. So what, what we wrote there, and just, I'm trying to be explicit and then happy to provide greater clarity, if needed, consensus to include as a service level enhancement and provide additional information through budget process as to when the service could be reactivated. So again, it's been a week since last time, and I think it last me, I said we would need to do more analysis in terms of the timing of the service reactivation. So from where we're at today with this check-in, we're continuing to prepare draft budget to be presented to the city council. The budget presentation format is comprised of two basic components. One is the base level budget and the other is service level enhancement. So anything that's listed as a service level enhancement will be advertised, identified as a distinct item through that budget process. So it's clear to the council and the community, what's an enhancement versus what's the base budget. So through that process, we'd be identifying the timeline. So what this indication is to me is direction to staff to include money in the, in the budget through a service level enhancement in terms of when the program actually reopens, that's to be determined. And we don't have that answer today.
Within one of the, again, I understood that part of the discussion was related to the budgeting, but also part of the discussion was related to prioritization in connection to recruitment, and that there was a certain recruitment funnel. And that, and that only so many sort of ongoing recruitments could happen at once. And so there were some restrictions there. And so there were the budget restrictions. And then there was this recruiting restrictions. And so what I, when I understand the budget restrictions, what I want to understand is where is staff's understanding in relation to how this should be prioritized in connection with those possible recruiting restrictions?
I guess is, is one sort of fundamental thing, we, we would typically not commence any recruitments until something's budgeted. So right now, our current focus on recruitments is on current vacancies. So that's, that's kind of an operating principle for us. So if the council were to provide different direction, then I would definitely need to know about that.
Okay, so then what, if, if there was a discussion, what were some of the other, just so I can understand. So their, their positions out, outlined new positions on, in, in this, this, this budget. So are those, are recruiting for those positions, will they exist in the same funnel as recruiting for positions in connection with a return to the gymnastics program? Or will they get priority over recruiting and with regards to the gymnastics program? So just, just so I'm, I'm clear.
Yeah, as of today, we have not begun, begun the process of identifying what that prioritization may look like in next fiscal year. So we're, we're just not there yet.
And so what's an idea of when you get there and who makes that decision? Because it doesn't make, if the council is here making budgeting decisions, but then if at some other place, some other group of people are making prioritizations with regards to recruiting, and then you have to go from the budget and get in the recruiting line, and the recruiting prioritization isn't being made at council, and there's no transparency for that, then it doesn't make any, you know, then what we budget is kind of irrelevant to understanding what, what, what's actually going to, to happen. Again, you know, because the questions I get, Mr. Murphy are, are, so when, like, right? And then based on the last discussion, I understood that there were these two elements, like the budget and then this recruiting. And again, coming into that meeting, I knew nothing about this recruiting restriction. I only knew about budgeting. Right? And so that was a surprise to me at that meeting, which I learned. But now that I've learned it, and I want to make sure I don't forget it, because, because it's been told to me that it's important.
Great. So I did, was there a specific?
Yeah, so the question was, who makes the recruiting prioritization decisions? Or are they, again, I'm just basing on the last meeting of which I told that they, I was told that it was an issue.
Yes, yeah. So in the, the general, you know, for the benefit of the council and the community and kind of common understanding, the city manager establishes priorities based off direction that the city council provides to the city manager. So ultimately, the city manager is responsible for prioritizing recruitment, reporting back to the council. If the council wants to provide different direction to the city manager, city manager can reevaluate that. There's trade offs for sure. And so that would be through this public process that we're talking about over the next couple of months. We do not have that answer today.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Actually, I will move to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Nash and a second by city council member Combs to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City council member Mueller.
Yep.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular best business item, I1, Assembly Bill 481 Compliance, Police Department Acquisition and Use, Military Equipment Ordinance Introduction and Use Policy. To introduce the item is Police Chief David Norris.
Thank you, council members. So I, I do have a short presentation that I'll run through. I know that, that there was a lot of information that came through for prior review. And so I'm gonna try to keep this presentation brief and then hopefully answer any questions that you may have. So Judy, let's go ahead and go to the second slide. So what we have on for tonight is a brief discussion on the, on the policy and the ordinance. I'm gonna give you an overview of the equipment that's reportable by legislation. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about a couple of transparency and accountability measures that we can build into this whole process. And, and then we'll have the recommendation on board, which will be for the introduction of the ordinance. And the city attorney is here to help us with that and determination of the necessity of this equipment for public safety without any reasonable alternatives, which is kind of part of the language of the overall legislation that's requiring for this mandate. So Judy, next one, please. Just to give a brief overview, so in September of last year, AB 481 was signed into law. This law requires all of our local law enforcement agencies to adopt what is being termed as a military equipment policy. The policy must be approved by an ordinance and prior to funding, acquisition, or use of any of the equipment. The Menlo Park Police Department, this is really important, is not seeking any new equipment. This is not about acquisition of any equipment. This is equipment that has already been in our possession, that has been part of our regular list of equipment that we've used for tactical type operations and extraordinary high safety situations for years. And the, this, we're requesting the introduction of this ordinance, and then the approval of the policy, which we have listed and have posted 30 days in advance as required, and then allowing the continued use of the existing equipment. Next one, please. There's just a few principles that we are working with on this. We are joining law enforcement agencies across the entire state in compliance with this process. This is not something that just Menlo Park PD has to do. I think that's really important for us to note. And then also really important to note is that all of our San Mateo County chiefs have been in significant discussion about this oncoming legislation, making sure that we kind of apply a consistent process to this. And the reason that that's important within this county is we have several small municipal agencies within this county. Many of those agencies have what we call regional SWAT teams, the Special Weapons and Tactics Unit, that would be a combined operational team that consists of a few different agencies. So in the central part of the county, there's North Central Regional SWAT Team that has several local agencies that work together. In our area, we work closely with Redwood City and Atherton PD on a, on a regional SWAT team. And so when we talk about the equipment that, that we are listing here as, as a group of chiefs within this county, we thought it was very important to produce two lists for you, even though we don't house that SWAT equipment here in this city. We do use it if we have an operation that goes to a tactical operation that the SWAT team would oversee. And so we felt that it was important to include that secondary list for your review as part of this process. In terms of what we have here in the Menlo Park PD storage, that, that's a very small list, but the list is a little bit larger for the local regional SWAT team. Again, the, the, the legalese on this describes quote unquote military equipment. None of this equipment is actually military surplus. None of this equipment is actually designed exclusively for military use. All of this is law enforcement equipment. But the way that the, that the law describes and requires us to report this, it does use the term military equipment. So I want to make sure that distinction is clear. And then, as we said a couple of minutes ago, this, none of this equipment is newly required. This is items that we've had in, in operation for quite some time. Go ahead and go to the next one, Judy. So we have the, the draft policy, which is actually now our, our policy that's, that's final for, for the military equipment use that is part of our entire Lexipol compendium of policies. And so a question came up recently about what is Lexipol? So Lexipol is a vendor that provides very consistent policies across many agencies. The vast majority of California agencies use Lexipol. And what that vendor does for us is ensures that any oncoming case law or legislative changes are quickly modified within the policy. And that way, we can take those policies back, review them as a department, approve them, and add them to our, to our overall policy as quickly as possible. The policy that, that, that you will have for review has been up on our website and available for public review for the past 30 days as required. Let's go ahead and go to the next one, Judy. So the, the equipment, an overview of the equipment. So Menlo Park PD only holds two different types of equipment that are described by this new legislation that, that we, that we hold here at the PD. One of those is a pepperball launcher, and essentially is almost exactly the same as a paintball gun. It has, it has small pellets that have the same type of, of oleoresin capsicum spray element that we would have on an officer's duty belt, but it allows us to deploy that from a distance if needed for safety purposes. We don't often use that, but it would be a situation where being able to deploy that from a distance to cause some type of incapacitation, so we could safely take a person into custody. That would be what that would be used for. And the exact same purpose for what we call our less lethal projectile launchers, we have two different versions of that. One is essentially a very large rubber ball that's affixed to a projectile that we could use at a distance to create the same type of incapacitation momentarily for a person, as well as what we have, what we call a beanbag round that can be deployed with a regular shotgun. But it's actually just a beanbag to kind of stun a person. And a lot of times what will cause us to be involved in that situation would be a confrontation with a person that has an edged weapon where, you know, they have a knife and the only lethal option that we have is the firearm. And so this gives us an intermediate option to potentially incapacitate that person, take him safely into custody without having to resort to a lethal option. So those are the only two items that we have that are, that are in our possession here at Menlo Park PD. The SWAT team has, has about eight items that, that fall within these classifications. And so it's a fairly short list. We have remote operating robots that are pretty standard for a tactical team, allow us to go in and take a look at things without actually having to make an entry into what might be potentially a volatile situation to be able to have that kind of distance and remote viewing capability or potentially listening capability to do a negotiation or other things that we might be able to do at a distance remotely. Two command and control vehicles, one of them is more of like an incident command type vehicle where you open up the back and your computer monitors and the ability to, to run an operation out of the back of a vehicle. And the other vehicle is essentially a transport vehicle to take our SWAT operators to a location. Neither of these is the type of vehicle that you see where you see the large armored vehicles. These are, one is a transport vehicle that, that the SWAT guys call it a bread truck. It's basically a big van. And then the other, the other is a, is like an incident command vehicle that, that has the ability to run, run a command post. There is a breaching tool shotgun, which is similar to what we have with the beanbag shotgun. This is a shotgun that's modified to be able to take out a locking mechanism on a door in a safe manner to, to allow those officers to, you know, breach a doorway and gain access to a residence that's been secured. Sometimes people have reinforcements on their doors, and we would use it for that type of purpose. I had a long conversation with a couple of our SWAT operators yesterday, and the vast, vast majority of time in these tactical operations, and again, you know, the tactical operations, we're talking about, you know, maybe less than, definitely less than 10 a year that we would do out of, you know, 20,000 incidents that we handle on a annual basis. The vast majority of those that go to a tactical operation, they're using more like hand tools, like what they call a halogen tool, which is kind of a giant, a giant crowbar or some type of version of that to open up doors. This would be kind of a last resort for reinforced type door. The 50 caliber rifle, my understanding is that that almost never gets actually used. It's really more as a training item. And they're looking at removing it entirely from, from their possession. So that's, but it does meet the requirements. So we have listed that. They, the tactical team does have some automatic rifles and machine guns that are part of their team operation, highly trained and skilled operators on our SWAT team that know how to safely handle these weapons. Rarely, if ever, are they used, but they do have them on the contingency. These are, you know, high danger operations that they embark on. Flashbangs and chemical agents, my understanding is that flashbangs, which can be really loud and disruptive, they don't use them inside a residence. They typically use them outside to create a distraction of some kind. They're, they, they understand the high impact of these types of items, and they're very, very rarely used. And then less lethal projectile launchers are exactly the same as what we would have in, in our equipment list. These are, these are things that would allow them to incapacitate a person at a distance to try and take them safely into custody. All the, all the equipment on both of these lists, just for reinforcement, is deployed exclusively for rare and exceptional high safety situations. Very, very rarely do we have to actually take it to this level. But we know that the equipment that we do have is really the only alternative that we have for that particular safety option. And that's why we have it in our, in, in our equipment storage. The, the one thing that I wanted to mention that is exempt from this reporting, but we have listed it for transparency and clarity for you all. And that is our patrol rifles. So our officers do have issued to them AR-15 assault rifles. They have been in operation as a regular part of our patrol equipment for 20 years. Our officers have that as an option when a very precise tactic needs to be taken to, to maybe operate something at a longer distance than maybe a handheld handgun type firearm would do to provide some precision in cases where there's concerns about the background. And you know, we have to be responsible for every single piece of armament that goes down range in any type of operation. piece of armament that goes down range in any type of operation. And so this gives our officers a very precise tool for those very, very rare instances. And even though it's not part of the required equipment, we wanted to make sure that you understand that we do have those in regular deployment out on the street. Let's go to the next one, Judy. So this policy establishes that future acquisition of the military equipment would require some type of public meeting, policy update and council approval that we're responsible for preparing an annual military equipment report that we would post on the city website and share with the public and that we would deliver that annually to council. And that would likely be some type of a consent calendar item unless there was something unusual that was going on, or if we had additional equipment to report, but we would make sure that we do that annual reporting. And I know the council had a couple of questions about when these type of operations take place and having some some sense of accountability to counsel about when these operations take place. So we can add a mechanism into either our quarterly reporting or annual reporting that would satisfy that concern and curiosity on the part of council. As an added measure to this, we know that sometimes unpredictable, high safety situations occur, we ask for resources to come in from other places that we wouldn't normally bring into the situation. Again, you know, highly, highly rare that we would have and encounter that type of situation. But if we did and there was a piece of equipment that we that we haven't brought in front of you that we had to use for an emergency situation, we have an accountability tool in that to bring that information back to council within thirty days so that you have an awareness since it hasn't been before you before. And since we wouldn't have typically have the time to, you know, come to a council meeting and ask for permission to use that particular item, we will bring it back to you with some accountability and reporting on that. We did, we did post the draft ordinance in the policy on the city website a month ago, at least thirty days prior to this meeting and compliance with with our requirements. And then Judy, the last, I think this is the last slide. We will be introducing the ordinance to approve the military equipment policy. That's our Lexipol policy. That does reflect some review and input feedback from the city attorney's office. It does include also some conversations that I've had with some of you and some other concerned parties to make sure that we're we're giving this the full reflection that we need to, and it ensures compliance with the law. And then make determinations that are required by government code for you all, which is that this equipment is necessary because there's no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same level of officer and civilian safety. And that's right out of the legislation, I believe. And then the policy will safeguard the public welfare, safety, civil rights and civil liberties of all of our residents here in Menlo Park. The ordinance would be considered, this will be the, you know, I think we call it waiving the first reading and and reviewing the ordinance and then it'll come back for adoption in May. And I think Judy, was that the tenth of May that we're going to have that back before you? Providing that there there aren't any concerns or delays from tonight's review of this. And so at this point, that concludes the presentation that I have. I know that that the city attorney had a couple of pieces that she wanted to add in terms of the ordinance for adoption.
Thank you, Chief. I wanted to advise the council and the city clerk as well that I'd like to read into the record one additional section to page two of nine of the ordinance. And that section will just enact the actual policy. This language was inadvertently left out, but its intention is all throughout the staff report and the ordinance itself. So city clerk, that language, which I will provide to you in writing later, will read on page two of nine of the ordinance, Menlo Park Police Department Policy seven oh eight, setting forth a military equipment use policy is hereby adopted.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on regular business item I one, Assembly Bill four eight one, Compliance Police Department Acquisition and Use, Military Equipment Ordinance Introduction and Use Policy, engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Nabeel Saad.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Chief, I heard repeatedly the words rarely and exceptionally. And I was wondering if you can provide us with examples where those equipments, either those listed in the Menlo Park Police Department custody or SWAT teams within the county have been deployed and used in Menlo Park in what situations?
Nabeel, does that conclude your public comment?
Yes, that that would that would be the end of my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item I one. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash.
Thank you. And Chief Norris, please do respond to Mr. Said's question.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I did the best I could to give you kind of an overview of the circumstances that might be required for some of this equipment to be operated. It would be difficult for me to recall any specifics and specific incidents where this equipment has been specifically used. However, I am aware of, you know, over the course of my career, seeing a number of operations where some different pieces of these types of equipment are used and used effectively. It has, and when I say that that this is rarely used, I asked our SWAT guys specifically, like, how often, how many times, you know, in a year do we actually go out on on a true call out within this city and do operations? And, you know, that answer, as I said before, was I said less than ten, but I was being really generous. They say usually less than five a year that we actually would have a situation like this. And and I can tell you from my experience that typically these operations are what we call a surrounding call out where where our SWAT team would get in position. We would begin a brief negotiation typically with the residents inside to let them know that we have some type of a reason, whether it's a warrant of arrest or a search warrant to enter the premises, we ask them to come out and comply and and avail themselves to us so that we can safely conduct that operation. Most of the time, that's exactly what happens. It's actually very rare that it that it doesn't. But most of this equipment is is held in the contingency that we have to take that to another option. We do have other, you know, other types of operations that would be, say, a hostage of barricade situation, like an ongoing criminal event that occurred or a person who we have found and pursued into a residence where we need to to conclude that operation safely. Sometimes there are contemporaneous issues like that and the same rules of engagement, the same process would apply. And typically, we are able to resolve those things either through a negotiation. And I then I say that I I do not have a lot of experience in terms of tactical operations, but I do have over a decade of experience as a crisis negotiator. And I can tell you that most of the time we are able to gain some type of compliance and get some type of a peaceful resolution without ever having to use any of the equipment. Most of the, most of this equipment we have in case. And and that I I know that doesn't fully answer the question, but that really is the best explanation that I can give is that our officers are highly trained in use of this equipment, but they hope that they never have to use it.
I have one follow up question for that. And that's when you say they, it's rarely and it's a handful of times, is that within Menlo Park or within the SWAT team area, I would assume?
So I I I believe it is specifically Menlo Park. Although, you know, the the three teams or the three, the three agencies operating in concert, it's not a high frequency overall either. But, you know, we we do have about twenty thousand calls for service that we go to on an annual basis to have a number that low that that it is exceptionally low. We have to have a team that's ready to handle these things. The 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 safety of our community demands it. But we hope that that we have those kinds of low numbers and that we really have to use this. Our officers do need to be prepared to act in circumstances that will require that level of safety.
So it's open for council, city council discussion. Does anyone have? Vice Mayor Wallison.
Thank you, Chief Norris. And I appreciate you looking at the issue of transparency and the requirements of the law as a floor, not a ceiling. And and thank you for reporting out on the rifles and and really leaning into the transparency. To that effect, I know you mentioned. So to the public speaker's point, I would love to see, and you mentioned this as a possibility as we report out on TASER use and use of force. So we can have more insight around what those numbers look like. So I'm more interested in trend lines. It's, and I don't want to make it overly onerous on you and your department to report out. But I think in the spirit of transparency, so we can kind of see what's going on. So just what would be your recommendation then on reporting? It seems like writing into the ordinance might not be necessary. It could be just a departmental procedure or something.
Yeah, I would, I would like to keep this as a commitment from the police department to the council that 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 we can agree on here somewhat verbally. And that is that we can certainly include it in the quarterly reporting. And I don't know if I've said this explicitly, but you know, some of the things that we do have on our quarterly reporting docket happen so rarely that I actually would enjoy being able to report to you that we have zero incidents when we have zero incidents or that or that, you know, over the course of a year that we have very few. And so I have no issue whatsoever with including that as, you know, part of our reporting mechanism for quarterly reporting process. And I know we have one that we, I think we have at least one, maybe two that we owe to you that are coming within the next month. So we'll include that as part of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there comments, questions? Councilmember Taylor, anything?
No, thank you, Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I want to just add that I very much appreciate the transparency and your detailed explanation of all of it. It's it's very educational.
Thank you.
Thank you. But what information are you exactly looking for? What do we need to?
I I will hit, I will hand it off to the city attorney to make sure that we are precise with what we need you to do tonight.
Thank you.
We would just like you to approve the ordinance on first reading or refer it to second reading, the languages in your recommendation. And the motion maker, if they don't mind making the motion subject to the additional language that I provided at the twenty minutes ago, that'd be great.
Thank you. Is there Councilmember Mueller?
I can go and make the motion. I just did want to add in context, I think with the events of last evening actually put everything in context pretty well, especially the fact that we have in our own department, only semi-automatic rifles and what happened last night was automatic. And so I think putting that in perspective for our residents, there's been quite a bit of prudence that our department has shown and what they have acquired over the years, which I I appreciate that. And I do appreciate transparency in the department, but I also think in light of everything to say, it's a reminder, the harm and how much in harm's way that you all can be in and how you can be out literally outgunned. You can find yourself going to a scene where you're facing someone who has more in their arsenal than you. So thank you for that. So I I'm happy to make the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Vice Mayor Wallison.
Yeah, second possible, would it be okay to include in the motion, the quarterly reporting of? Okay, Councilmember Muehlfield, accept a friendly amendment for the quarterly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm happy to, he's, I'm happy to accept it, I think. And then and my motion was actually predicated on what was represented by the chief that he wanted to do. So happy to include it.
Second thought.
And I assume that includes the city attorney's language.
I'll just restate the motion for the record.
Yes, please.
The motion by Councilmember Mueller is to waive first reading and introduce an ordinance regarding policy department acquisition and use of military equipment and approve the military equipment use policy with the addition of the language that the attorney read into the record at the presentation of the item with the addition of the direction from Councilmember Wallace and to the chief in his department.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen.
So I have the motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, a second by Vice Mayor Wallison, as read into the record by our city attorney, Neera Doherty. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular business item is I two, adopt a resolution affirming that independent redistricting commission's redistricting plan and the new city council district boundaries set forth in map one thirty one point one is adopted by the independent redistricting commission. To introduce the item is City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a verbal introduction to this item, followed by a presentation by our independent redistricting commission chair, Kyle Ariano, who will be following me this evening. The action before you is to adopt a resolution affirming the IRC or independent independent redistricting commissions redistricting plan and the new city council district boundaries. A little bit of background, Menlo Park was initially elected at large until twenty seventeen, when the city transitioned from at large to by district elections. In twenty eighteen, elections in districts one, two, and four took place. And then in November of twenty twenty, elections in districts three and five took place, and that completed the full transition to the district based elections. On October thirty first of twenty twenty one, the city council adopted a resolution establishing the seven-member IRC to redraw district boundary lines as authorized by the California Election Code. December of twenty twenty one, the city council then adopted an ordinance to amend the Menlo Park Municipal Code to provide that the IRC shall adopt the district boundary lines by resolution. In accordance with the establishment of the IRC resolution, the first three members of the IRC were selected at random in November of twenty twenty one. Those three members conducted interviews of the remaining IRC applicants from November ninth to November twelfth of twenty twenty one. And then on November eighteenth of twenty twenty one, the remaining vacancies on the IRC were filled by the three member consensus. And the first meeting of the IRC was held in December of two thousand twenty one. The city did consult with the demographers Geo Novo. And a total of twenty four draft maps were reviewed and discussed by the IRC. Those draft maps all met the federal requirements of population equality across districts. Race not being a predominant factor or criteria when the districts were drawn. Compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty five. And then additionally, all draft maps satisfied the Fair Maps Act requirements, including district boundaries being geographically contiguous. Boundaries must be minimized or must minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest must be easily identifiable and geographically compact. And maps may not favor or discriminate against a political party. The IRC has met and or exceeded the requirements for outreach as prescribed in the city council resolution and in the Fair Maps Act. The IRC had a total of seven public hearings and two were held before the any review of the draft maps. And there was also two in-person workshops held in December of two thousand twenty one. Fast forward a little bit, on April fourteenth of this year, the IRC adopted a new city council district boundary map, which is included in your packet, map number one three one point one, and also included was a redistricting plan. And so at this time, I would like to invite our, again, IRC chair to come on screen. And so at this time, I would like to invite our, again, IRC chair to come on screen and provide the report out to the city council. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Kyle Ariano, Chair of the Independent Redistricting Commission. Before I get started, I would also like to acknowledge and thank my fellow commissioners, Sean Ballas, Susan Earhart, Brian Gilmer, Susanna Hill, Dave Walter, and Nabeel Saad, as well as the alternate commissioners, Brian Kissel and Marion Markwart. Just a few brief remarks on our work plan over the last five or so months. And, and everything that led up to the map for your consideration this evening. Next slide, please. So our work really is covered in the first three bullets here. And then in our final meeting, we did also provide some feedback for city staff as they embark on future redistricting and after the next census. So here, I've lost my screen here. Okay, um, first phase was really the first, I believe, four or five, three or four meetings where the commissioners and and members of the public really received training on the statutory requirements under the Elections Code, the Fair Maps Act, Voting Rights Act, as well as education on the tool that we were using to draw our maps. So in terms of the Fair Maps Act, we learned about the procedural requirements, basically the public hearing process, the timing, and as well as the substantive requirements for drawing new district maps as explained by City Clerk Karen a few moments ago. And in terms of training on the map drawing software, we sat through several meetings and sessions with our demographers from GeoAnovo on the mapping software called Districter, which allowed various members of the public, as well as the commissioners, in fact, to draw and propose maps for our consideration. The second phase was really a public outreach phase. You know, again, also, or again, this was dictated partially by the Elections Code in terms of requirements for public hearings and outreach, but also something that the commissioners felt very strongly about and worked very hard to, very hard with city staff to try and maximize public participation in our work. We went through a study session on how to engage folks using the various tools at our disposal, city website, email updates, social media, and trying to engage with members of the, the normal media, as it were, to really just get the word out that Menlo Park, like many of the cities in the area, were, we were in the process of redrawing council member districts and wanted to engage and solicit as much public feedback as we could. In addition to that, we held several mapping workshops where the demographers provided demonstrations and tips on how to use our Districter software, and also really started to explore this concept of communities of interest, which, as we went through our consideration process, really proved to be one of the key aspects and sort of the fuzziest statutory requirements that we, as a commission, had to grapple with in selecting a map. And that brings me to the third phase of our work, which was, you know, the final three meetings through March and April, which was the consideration and selection of the proposed maps. To that end, we considered 22 unique maps. We evaluated them, we tweaked them, we reevaluated them according to the statutory criteria. Some of the, you know, most relevant criteria that, that we kept coming back to as recurring themes from Menlo Park were trying to improve the population balance across the districts. After the 2020 census results, we saw about a 9% deviation in, from the ideal population balance, basically taking the population of Menlo Park dividing by five, and whatever that number is, was, was the ideal. Current council districts gave us about a 9% deviation from that ideal. And, and so one of the things that we tried to do in accordance with the statute was to, to reduce that deviation to get as close to as equal as possible. Another thing that we took very seriously, and as I mentioned, grappled with, with each of the maps was preserving, what was this concept of communities of interest? And, and really what that meant for Menlo Park was trying to respect the established neighborhoods as communities of interest, especially in districts two and three. And also how to handle the areas along El Camino Real, as many of the commission members were very concerned and aware of the proposed and anticipated development along that corridor. We wanted to ensure that as that population potentially increased, and as those communities developed within Menlo Park, that we respected them and understood how to best incorporate that into potential districts until the, until the next census in 2030. And based upon that, we, we did unanimously agree upon the map before you this evening. It's map 131.1. I believe that was the 20th of the 22 maps we considered, which we believe really just checks all the, checks all the boxes and, and represents the best balance of all the statutory criteria. And, and it did ultimately improve the population balance slightly from 9% and change to around 8% and change. And then finally, in our, in our last meeting, two, two Thursdays ago, we also provided some feedback for city staff in terms of things that we thought worked well, and things that we thought we could do a little bit better if next time around. Just to briefly summarize those, it was starting earlier, giving ourselves a little bit more time in the process, one, to, to learn and educate ourselves and future commissioners, but also to try and lengthen the amount of time that we could receive public comment between when we adopt our proposed final map and when we would present it to the council for its consideration. And also suggested a more formalized or written, even, training format for commissioners to learn about the requirements of, of the Elections Code and how they are to go about their job of drawing council member districts. And then also a suggestion that we thought was one of the key factors for our success, which was having representation from all districts or geographic diversity within the city. Although that wasn't something that was specifically set forth in the resolution, council resolution creating the IRC, it was something that we as the, or that the original, or the, the first three members of the IRC and interviewing candidates sought to achieve representation from, from all areas of the city, again, really to help us get the best understanding we could in terms of established neighborhoods and communities of interest throughout the city. And so with that, I am pleased to present what I believe is a, a, a good map, the result of rigorous and thoughtful consideration by the council, or excuse me, by the commission. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we, City Clerk Karen, could you please call for a public comment? I'm sorry, I guess I was also wondering, do we see the map?
Like, I can, I can display it on the screen now, or do you want to do it following public comment?
Or entirely your choice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's take public comment, and then I'll go ahead and, and display the map. Thank you. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I to adopt a resolution affirming the independent redistricting commission's redistricting plan and the new city council district boundaries set forth in the map 131.1 as adopted by the independent redistricting commission. To engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen, if you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item I two. And our first speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor, and staff, and particularly the independent redistricting commission, Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park, the Bell Haven neighborhood. I want to thank Mayor Nash, Vice Mayor Wallison, and Councilmember Taylor for having confidence in the residents of Menlo Park. I appreciate the concerns of Councilmembers Combs and Mueller, and it is only through that type of dissent that we have the opportunity to grow. I want to recognize the city staff, particularly Clerk Haring and, and her staff, and they held the process together by ensuring all the information and materials were readily available and maintaining the website. I thank GeoAnovo for extraordinary amount of work that they were required to do that made all the information very clear, readily available, up to date, and answered a host of questions from the commission as well as residents. They were available for extra meetings, and I never heard them say no. And they kept the commission always moving forward. I thank our attorney for standing by to make sure that legal requirements were all followed by everyone. And I hope all of the commissioners stay engaged. I am so deeply grateful for each member of the commission and alternatives. They clearly demonstrated the wisdom, strength, and ability to compromise when you disagreed, and you did disagree. For me, it restores my faith in representative democracy and the belief that a strong democracy starts at home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item I two. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, I'll return it to you, and I will go ahead and display the new district map.
Thank you so much, City Clerk Karen. And before we open for public comment, I will, once again, although it's been done several times, I'd like to thank all of the residents who've served on the commission, Chair Ariano, Vice Chair Gilmer, Commissioners Ballas, Earhart, Hill, Saad, Walter, and Alternates Kissel, and Markwart, as well as the City Attorney's Office, Denise Pizzano, and Tamar Burke, GeoAnovo, our amazing city clerk, Judy Heron, who pulled it all together, and Sarah Sandoval, and then also the very important members of the public who kept coming back to this process and to the, looking at the maps, working with the commission. And it's really just quite a feat that you pulled all of this together. And I, City Clerk Karen, you orchestrated all of it, and it's really a tribute to you that we've got this map in front of us. So thank you so much. And I now open up the floor for the council discussion. Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to say, amazing job. Like, I just wanted to commend the, commend, commend you all. So thank you for your work. It was, it's great to see how it all turned out. I want to say to my, to the new resident, new residents in my district, it's a joy to be representing you again. So, thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Thank you, Mayor Nash, echoing what Councilmember Mueller said. I do want to thank the commission Chair Ariano, Vice Chair Gilmer, and the rest of the redistricting commission commissioners for, for all the work they put in. Of course, the city clerk, the city attorney's office, and the rest of staff. I also want to thank the, the residents that were especially engaged in this process. Certainly, Ms. Jones being at the top of the list. I do, excuse me, though, for the record, want to point out that, one, that the process that I prefer, the only thing that would have been different is that a council would be making an official vote at this moment, instead of just, you know, reviewing it. And, and so it's not something that would have substantively changed the process of this far, but I think provided an appropriate check. I will, would also like to say, and again, not, not that I'm taking credit for, for the work, it was, it was my concerns that resonated with a lot of members in the community and brought a lot more attention to this issue and to the concerns that I was expressing, that I think would not have existed if I had not brought those concerns and been quite clear in, in the negative impact that I thought that, that could likely result. I think that discussion and my concerns resonated with a lot of residents in, in ensuring that they followed this process closely. It resonated with a lot of residents who were not, I think, initially thinking of, of serving the community in this way, but, but based on that debate and the concern I raised, decided to, to get involved. And so again, I'm not, not taking credit by, by any stretch. But, but I do want to acknowledge that I think part of the process that we saw, and part of its seamlessness and professionalism, was, was very much, I think, a result of, of, of that discussion, that debate, and those concerns that I gave rise to.
City Councilmember Taylor, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Mayor Nash.
Vice Mayor Wallison?
Thank you. I just want to echo all of the thank yous. I, I think it's a tremendous, not only work product at the end, but process that you all went through with your, I, I didn't attend live any of the meetings. I watched some of the video after, and just the thoughtfulness and the deliberative, respectful conversations and deliberations that were made were, were really remarkable. And as Ms. Jones said, a testament to participatory democracy and everything. It was very heartwarming, given where we are right now with our country. So I really, Chair Ariana, your leadership was tremendous, and the whole thing was, is just a joy to, to have work itself out. Ms. Jones, I just want to thank you. It's been years in the making of your advocacy that brought this independent commission together. And I doubt Helen Gray goes here. I think she's retired. But I hope somewhere she's feeling some gratification of the, the result of this process. So just thank you so much. And this is going to be a great map for So just thank you so much, and this is going to be a great map for the next 10 years.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? I will move. And do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, I did see City Councilmember Taylor's hand go up. Just wanted to
Thank you.
Do a quick check on that.
I was going to second.
Okay.
You can have the second if you want.
That'll work. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Nash and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to adopt a resolution affirming the independent redistricting commissions, redistricting plan, and the new city council district boundaries set forth in map 131.1 as adopted by the IRC. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items, however, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. And I do want to note that Vice Mayor Willison has, did state that she had some questions. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on information items, J1, City Council Agenda Topics, or J2, Short Term Rental Compliance Update, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, J1 and J2. Seeing no hands raised. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison, would you like to ask your questions about the short term rental compliance update?
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is regarding agenda item J2, the short term rental compliance. I appreciate the update of the number of rentals we have. I went back and looked at kind of what we were expecting versus what we are getting, and it looks like we're getting less than we were expecting. So I would just ask, so I just wanted to make that comment. For the, one, I'm curious the frequency that we're going to be getting updates and reporting. I appreciate, you know, maybe seeing this again in six months or something. And then also the next time we see it, to get some kind of scatter map, heat map of where these rentals are at a minimum, like by district, but it would be great to see a map. And then I don't know if if it's possible to get information about, you know, who owns these. There's been some concern about LLCs and large companies, you know, buying them up and renting them out to their employees. So if there's any information we can get about who owns them and who's renting them. I don't know if there's some publicly available data set about this, given that it's taxes. And then ideally, if I, going on my wish list here, how many days these are being rented out? So for instance, I have a neighbor who who only rents out, you know, it's their house, and they go out of town maybe once or twice a year, and they rent it out for like a week or two. I think we can all agree that's wonderful and great, and they can get some extra income. But I think the concern here is that people just use, taking the unit off the market for actually long term stay and using it as a hotel permanently. And so any information that can be gleaned about that practice. So I know that was a lot, but I don't know if that kind of data is possible, but that is what I would love to see in the next report. So I guess I'll ask staff, is that ridiculous ask, or is that feasible? And and what would that look like?
Great, thanks, Vice Mayor Willison. Yes, I think most of that is reasonable, feasible, just like we would cross check, and if if there's anything that we can't report out on, we definitely let the council know. So in terms of the timeframe, yes, if it's three to six months, that that would be reasonable for us to to come back on that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Mueller. All right, is there any other questions or discussion on the, any of the information items? All right, we will now go on to the city manager's report with interim city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thanks for the opportunity to provide a few updates. So one is regarding an event that occurred this past weekend, the Youth Advisory Committee hosted a successful park cleanup at Bedwell Bayfront Park. More than 40 community members, including teens, adults, families, came together to clean up the park for Earth Day. Staff from Public Engagement, Public Works, Library, and Community Services assisted the teens from the Youth Advisory Committee, which I think we affectionately call, refer to as YAC sometimes, to plan and promote the event. So a great, great opportunity to do good this past weekend. And then tomorrow, we're scheduled to open bids for the Sharon Road sidewalks. So assuming that the the bids are favorable, we intend to bring that to the city council on May 10th with the construction occurring this summer, if everything goes well. And then regarding the Safer Bay project, so that the San Francisco Creek JPA released the notice of preparation yesterday for the environmental review for the Safer Bay project, which would provide resiliency to coastal flooding and sea level rise in East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, as well as habitat and recreation improvements. Comments can be submitted through June 4th to the Creek JPA. And then there's going to be two public meetings held via Zoom, one on May 11th and one on May 19th. And then finally, related to the Safer Bay project, City Menlo Park staff did respond earlier this week to a request clarifying information on the FEMA brick application from Menlo Park's portion of the Safer Bay project. Although this is not a funding award notice, it's a good sign that FEMA has continued interest in progress and evaluating this application for a $50 million grant to provide protection from sea level rise along the bay. So those are just a few updates of things that are going on.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. Are there any reports from city council members since April 12th city council meeting? Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you. So as you all might remember, we joined commute.org. And so I've been attending their board meetings, and at this last board meeting, there was discussion around affordable housing development for teachers in Daly City and developing a commute.org kind of van pool since the teachers are all kind of living in the same place and traveling to the same schools and possibly some, you know, e-bike incentives, some different programs. So I just thought that was a creative solution to help teacher housing and getting people around without single occupancy vehicles that might be of interest to folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So in accordance with city council procedures, CC 20-013, city council initiated items. Following agenda items are to be considered by the city council and can ask staff questions regarding preliminary scope, analysis, and resource requirements. After discussion with a motion and second, the city council may take one of the following actions. Direct the city manager to prioritize staff resources to prepare a formal staff report for further city council consideration and or action, or direct the item to an advisory body for preparation of a formal staff report with no additional staff support required, or direct the city manager to prepare a formal staff report for further city council consideration as resources are available, or defer action to the city council's annual goal setting process. The city council initiated item is L1, Direction on Drafting a Policy to Sunset Unused Capacity from Tax Measures. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the city council initiated item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. At this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item L1, Direction on Drafting a Policy to Sunset Unused Capacity from Tax Measures, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, mayor and city council members, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And my comment on this item is really very process focused. And I was very intrigued by the last item in the Choices Before Council, which is to refer this item to a city council of a goal setting process. This year is really unusual in that with the city manager transition, there there hasn't yet been a goal setting process. And, you know, with the staffing challenges, it's really, staff are doing the very best they can to move the city through a you know, through a regular budget process, you know, with a, without that type of traditional goal setting. And so my process concern would be is that if we are really so so stretched as to not be, have been able to do the goal setting yet, I would be, you know, really nervous about devoting staff to look into this particular issue right now and would hope that there will be a time that there will be a a city manager and a goal setting process where this could be considered, you know, in a broader context. I think, you know, before then, you know, given that this is about, you know, unused tax capacity and utilizing any such capacity would need to be, you know, very much a front and center at a city council decision and would get, you know, robust consideration that there isn't really any risk of anything happening, you know, by accident to utilize any of that capacity. And so I think that, you know, focusing, having staff focusing on the work that they're doing and getting the budget through is the the highest priority now, and then hopefully there will be capacity to do a goal setting where this can be, you know, just discussed in a in a broader context. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for public comment on item L1. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, would you like to introduce the item?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so, and I appreciate it. So really what this comes out of, and I I want to say to my colleagues, I'm not trying to like re-litigate anything that's done. And I don't, and I understand the need of why we've done, and why what's been done has been done. But what I wanted to talk about was, as a council member, having served for the time that I have, there was always this side, every year you looked at these different measures, taxing measures or bond measures or UUT, and you think, well, we're not going to do it this year, you're not going to do this year. Well, what really started to crystallize to me, and it, and it, I think you sort of saw it happening organically in the map in the last meeting, and then a lot of thought afterwards was, look, some of these tax measures were over 20 years old. And that to me is, like, I started really thinking about it. And 20 years ago, so the, when Measure T was passed, that was in 2001, it was 21 years ago. It was literally past days after I got sworn into the bar. Like, you know, George Bush Jr. was our first president, friends and friends and well, everybody loves Raymond, we're still on TV, and we were just invading, we were just invading Afghanistan. And what struck me was, the Afghanistan war was the longest international war in US history, and our bonding capacity from Measure T lasted longer than it, right? And for some reason, for that, for me, that's like, at some point, it's like, the people who voted for the tax are really the ones who should be taxed. And there's a reason why we have taxer approved, tax voter approved taxing initiatives, because they're voting, they're saying, tax me. But in this circumstance, when the tax, when those taxes last so long, it's really a different public who's being taxed by it. The constituents who see that tax are different. And especially in a circumstance where we see the cost of living rising at the rate that it does over 30 years, and you see property to, property values rise. And for granted, some people have their fixed property values, but there are other people who move in who don't. They have much larger property values, you can get taxed much more. And so, you know, for me, that's when I went, all right, I don't want to relegate the past. But as a policy, and I appreciate what Ms. Levin said about, well, we're always going to be thoughtful. That's true, we're always thoughtful, but we set policy as guideposts for future councils. The policy that a council set is say, you know what, in this circumstance, you know, we were really hungry, so we ate some junk food, but eating junk food isn't a good practice going forward. And we're so, we're going to go ahead and put in a policy that says, and it's only a policy. So the other thing I'd point out to my colleagues is, this is a policy. We can't, I understand that as a council, we can't amend an ordinance through a council, amend a measure through a council action. But what we can say is, we can put a bar on it and say, look, after a policy of 10, as a policy, after 10 years, we're not going to do this unless, you know, you know, you can always go against a policy. But as a policy, this is something where that we wouldn't do, that council shouldn't do. Unless there's some, you know, and then a council could later say, well, there's a big need, or we're getting rid of the policy, whatever. But at least we're setting forth something there. And the reason why I really want to set that policy is, I actually think it goes back to when you bring the measure to the voters or you bring the UUT to the voters. We, I think honestly, if you, if the, if the city isn't going to spend the money in 10 years, don't ask for all that money. If you're not going to use the UUT, don't ask for all that UUT. Because that capacity just sits there, and what happens is, you run the risk that all of that gets tapped at a later date when others are getting tapped. And then there's this big, there's this tax burden being put on voters that they had no idea was coming, they never voted for it, and it kind of, and it flies in the face of what a voter approved tax measure is to begin with. So I share that with you all. That's why I I'd like us to pass this policy. I'd like, tonight, I'm just asking you to consider setting it. And if you don't, at least I've read in the record what my concerns were about it. And I, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to pass judgment on any prior votes of this council. I'm really just trying to set policy going forward. Thank you.
So we're now open for city council discussion. Are there any comments? Okay, do we have a motion and a second? Actually, do we have?
Mayor Nash, would you like me to display on the screen the options?
Thank you, that would be very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question for staff. So because this would require, anything we do potentially would require staff resources. So because this would require, anything we do potentially would require staff resources, does the action require just a motion and a second, or a majority vote on council? I'm just, I'm still confused about the policy about agendizing things, to be honest. Thanks.
Justin and I, neither of us know the answer. It's, it's not totally clear. I think I read the policy as requiring a majority vote because it says that the city council may take one of the following actions and the count for the council to do anything. It's always a majority of the legislative body to act on behalf of the council. But I also recognize that hasn't always been the city's past practice, and so for that I would look to the city manager.
I can tell you, past practice was always, it only took two. So.
Could you please explain two to do?
Two to agendize. So only took one person, another twelfth, I, I take that back. It took two actually to get to this, took two to get to this point, and then three to get onto the agenda.
City Manager Murphy, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, that, I, I, I believe that the, it's a, what we're referring to is a council policy, so ultimately it's kind of council discretion. But I, I think it does boil down to what, what would be expected with bringing something back. And so I, I guess I would appreciate that there be, if there's an expectation that staff resources are spent on anything that comes back on the future agenda, that there is a majority, majority support for that.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Murphy. And yeah, that's my, just as, as we have sort of coalesced around, my understanding is the policy was that like two people to agendize it for a discussion, and then, but a majority to actually give staff direction to devote time and resources to continue to explore it. And so I think Mayor Nash agendized it by just the request, and, and so from, from Councilmember Mueller. And so in that way, like to your point, you know, the council policy can, can be a little malleable. My question is, is that I remember at one time, there was sort of like, or no, not one time, that the staff kept a list of council requests, like individual council member requests, and I know that, that some of those requests were not things that officially came through this process. So is that, I know that that was under a prior, or prior city managers. So one, my question to you, Mr. Murphy, is have you continued this process of keeping a tally of individual requests that come in from council members? And two, can we see some, can we see it? That would be my, and I'll stop there.
Let's see, so I, I, I believe at least some iteration of that, we've been reporting to council on twice, where I'd say it's a request that at least came up through a city council meeting such as this. So that is being produced as part of the quarterly reporting that we're doing on council work plan items, priorities. There's, so then there's another item of a kind of council member requests that were fielded in settings like this, so that, that list does exist. Yep.
And so with the idea then that this would be added to that list, or would it go someplace else? And I guess it's all, you're, you're saying, hey, that's what I want you to decide. Totally fair. All right. So I, I withdraw the question, unless you want to answer it in some way.
I, I guess I could, what I could do is clarify my previous statement a little bit about that, whether there's a majority or not, to, to be able to kind of track this on that list. I, I think if there's interest in that this evening, that, that's a relatively simple one, but in terms of actually bringing it forward with staff resources to work on it, then I, I would want to, that list prioritized in some way.
Okay, so you're saying that like, you, you would be okay with something less than a majority to get this on that list? But to get it anyplace else from that list, you, you want, you want a majority of the council?
Correct.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thanks for indulging us in understanding our own processes. So sorry to keep going on this. But aren't things on that list either getting worked on or intentionally on hold? Like, there's some understanding if it's on the list, it's in the pipeline for getting staff resources versus something coming back in a goal setting to determine whether or not it gets staff resources. So I just wanted a clarification on that.
Let's see, so if, if there's that, that's again, it becomes a little bit of the discretion of, of the council. Like if there's no, no desire for it to be on that list, then we won't be tracking, tracking that particular item. So I, I would have, I would probably want to pull up the list and go through some of the examples if, if, if it was critical this evening. But I would want to just double check whether that's part of the, this agenda topic or not.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I, so I, I, I do think, and I just offer this, if you guys don't want to, don't want to put it on to, and I, to a future agenda, and you don't think necessarily I understand, but I do think, I raise it because I do think there is a significant, a significant portion of our constituency in the city that are looking for us to put some restraints around, around how we deal with taxation. So I think that this addresses some of those concerns in response to that. I think this policy would show that the council is trying to put some thought around that, at the same time it is doing revenue raising.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out where we are right now and what we're trying to do and whether, so are we to vote on which one of these four items we want, what we want to do with this agenda item?
Well, I think that the policy says that with a motion and a second on one of these, the council would vote.
So if there's not a motion and a second, then it just
dies.
Dies. All right.
I'll make the motion. Well, let me ask this, do I have a second to any of the four? Is anyone going to offer me a second to any of the four?
So, so is deferring action to goal setting, it doesn't bind us to what happens at goal setting, we just discuss it at goal setting. I would second that.
I would just like to ask, how would that be, is that any different than if Councilmember Mueller were to bring it up at goal setting? It's, it's essentially just making sure that it, it goes on to the goal setting agenda?
So can I actually ask, I actually, with, what I would ask for as a compromise is, would you send it to the finance and audit committee to look at?
I would say I would like to know what else the finance and audit committee is dealing with in order to do that. My understanding is that they have not met in a bit, and, but they were planning to, so it really is a matter of priorities. And I understand.
Well, I, I've been, I've, I mean, like Councilmember Combs' comment, but I've been up with the finance and audit committee, and they are, we're looking for stuff to do. So if they're not short of interest on, on actually being assigned something.
All right. I guess I would be interested in hearing what the finance and audit committee actually has on their agenda. I understand what Councilmember Mueller is saying. I also understand that we're have a new finance, interim finance director, and I, I am actually incredibly curious what is going on with the finance audit committee, although this may not be the time to, to approach that. And actually, I will stop there.
It's, look, so that my motion is directed, directly I am to the finance and audit committee for preparation of a formal staff report with no additional staff report required. And then they try to get a recommendation from them on what they think that they should do, should be done. So I will make that motion, and if there's no second, I can just let it go.
It appears that there is no second. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Next up is closed session. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on the closed session item M one.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, we'd like to invite them, any member of the public who wishes to speak on our closed session item M one, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation to potential cases. To engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen, if you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item M one. Seeing no hands raised. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. So we will now adjourn to closed session. The city council will report out immediately following the closed session. We are anticipating closed session to be approximately 30 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, having a quorum return to our virtual and in-person days, Mayor Nash, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you. I would like to reconvene the April 26th meeting and introduce City Attorney Dorothy for a report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. We are now adjourned.